Okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today, our invocation will be led by Pastor Rob Bailey from Southside Community Church. Pastor?
Let's pray together. Our Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in this beautiful city. And so today, we pray for our law enforcement officers, for our firefighters, EMTs, other first responders, that you would keep them safe as they protect us. And we come to you in the midst of a divided country when it is hard to be leader. So we pray for our local leaders. We pray for our mayor, for our city council members, for our city manager, and other city staff, that you would give them wisdom. We also pray that you would help them as they seek to find balance between family and work, civic responsibilities, and so we pray that you would guide them. We thank you for them. Help them today. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And today, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag will be led by Isabel Martinez. She is a senior at 4-H Moody High School. Isabel?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Isabel. Good luck in your studies. Go Trojans. Okay, Ms. Whitaker, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulette Juarez.
Present.
Councilmember Joel Madera.
Here.
Dylan Hernandez. He's actually participating in the vote.
Here.
There. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hernandez. Michael Hunter.
Here.
Billy Leibman.
Here.
Donna Finesse.
Here.
Then Molina.
Present.
Mac Hesley.
Here.
Grace Smith.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City attorney Miles Rizley. Mayor and council acquorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. So next, we'll go to Section E, and that is our city manager's comments and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Okay, great. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. We're going to begin today by talking about water and our water supply, just to remind the community. We do want to remind the community that the city is still in stage one water restrictions, drought restrictions, stage one, following city council policy. Weekly, myself and my water leadership team meet still with the National Weather Service for updates on rainfall forecast, on drought monitoring, and the drought outlook. So I want to give you some of that information today and make sure the community is aware. We know that in August, we received a pretty decent amount of rainfall. However, our two reservoirs that we monitor our drought tolerance by did not reach 50% capacity, and that would have gotten us out of the stage one water restrictions. I think the highest was 48%, a little over 48%, so we did not reach that 50%. This morning's combined capacity at Lake Corpus Christi in Choke Canyon is at 47.2% and declining. And so each day, it's going down little by little. The, there's no significant rainfall that we had this last week, and none is expected this week. The National Weather Forecast, or National Weather Service, forecasts a slight chance of rain Sunday into Monday, with potentially some falling over the recharge areas. However, according to the National Weather Service, the outlook for the next three months, October through December, is not that great. December, well, now through December, we're looking to, they're forecasting a 40% to 50% chance of below-average rainfall. So 40% to 50% below-average rainfall is forecasted for our region, and that is because of the La Niña weather event that is still in place. And to let the community know, this would be, according to the National Weather Service, the third season in a row that we have the La Niña, which is very unusual. A double dip, as they call it, La Niña is unusual. But a triple dip, this would be the third year, is even more unusual. So we need to be mindful of that, that we're heading into a dry season at less than 50% capacity. And then, this time of year, October through November, through December, we don't get all that much rain anyway. Our historical averages over the three months is seven inches. Three inches in October, two in November, two in December. So they're not rain-producing months to begin with. So, to that end, and following city council policy, we're still in stage one water restrictions. We want to remind the community that enforcement still is occurring, which means that persons that are violating the council ordinance can be fined up to $500 per violation. Now, it's important to remember that we live in South Texas, right here in Corpus Christi, and we know that this area is historically prone to drought. It's no surprise for us that have lived here for many, many years. And so we do want to encourage residents to not assume whether or not water restrictions have lifted. If there's any question or doubt, they need to or should call our 311 number, just to be sure. Or they can go on our website to see if the stage one water restrictions are still in place. We shouldn't assume if we see a little rain here in the Bay Area or in our city that that means that it's also rained in the recharge area. We know that weather patterns and rainfalls can fall in different amounts in different locations. So it's critical to make sure you're aware of the drought-stage water restrictions that we're in, and that can easily be done before you turn your irrigation system on by calling us at 311 or going to our website. So that's just a friendly reminder to the community. So our next item is, one, we want to recognize some of our employees. Oh, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Councilman Hesley.
Peter, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One is related to, as you well know, we passed an ordinance here a while back requiring developers to put in additional trees and whatnot on new housing. What are we going to do with respect to allowing them to water, to try to maintain those?
Yes, sir, right. So new installation of lawn and trees are allowed to be watered to make sure they're, they sustain life. And then, if there's a very significant development, take, for instance, Carroll High School, where there's a significant amount of grass and foliage. They work with the city to get an exemption approved by the city team, the water team, on their watering restrictions. So the best advice is communicate with the city, the city water department, Corpus Christi Water, if there's any questions. But for new tree installations, we know that this council has passed an ordinance that requires the planting of at least one tree in the front of the house and one in the back. And watering those in is allowed with our ordinances.
Okay, second question. Have we, I know we discussed this some weeks ago. Have we worked out yet the ability for residents to purchase affluent water from the city?
Let's see. So, Murphy, do you have an update on that? We do have, our OSA wastewater treatment plant was retrofitted to be able to use the affluent, but I'm not sure if, with...
Yeah, so the update is that we had, we're working with Parks and Rec like we were doing a couple of weeks ago, and trying to make that process work. So far, we've had some ups and downs issues with that, making that work with the truck and all that. We do have a hold harmless letter that Legal has prepared, and now we're just trying to set up a structure so that we could do it, physically do it.
Okay, so would residents be able to acquire that water at no charge, that fluid at no charge? Or is there going to be a...
It's probably going to be, there will have to be some charge, probably like $1,000 per gallon, I think is, or a dollar per thousand gallons, sorry. No. Yes, very expensive water.
I'm going to get in that business.
A dollar per thousand. I think that's what it was, was a dollar per thousand.
Dollar per thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, and final question, Peter. There seems to be, at least from what I've seen, a new car wash going up on every vacant lot in the city of Corpus Christi. There's at least three going up, new ones going up out in District One. Yeah, within a mile of each other. So what is the requirement with respect to heavy water users such as car washes?
Right. So car washes today, many of them recycle their water. And our studies show that washing your vehicle at home with a hose versus at a car wash, at a car wash, there's less water use because of the cycle that they use. The hose isn't running necessarily. But more importantly, they recycle. They have devices and instrumentation that recycles the water.
Do we have anybody inspecting those processes?
We do. So at Development Services, when they submit their plan reviews, their construction plans, we see their recycling devices that are in there. The city council doesn't have an approved policy necessarily. Some of our peer cities that we compare ourselves to have not necessarily policies, but have certificates or seals of approval that are issued for low-water-using car washes. That's something we could look at doing in the future. We don't do that today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about other councilmen, but I've had a number of calls from people saying, "Hey, you're, you know, fining me for watering my yard, but the car wash up the street here has got water blowing in the air." So why are they exempt from, you know, water restrictions when I am? So it's something we probably need to look at.
Okay.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we focus a lot of time on the lake level with it, but I think it would be very helpful for this council to know what's happening with Mary Rhodes Pipeline, that since we've got over half of our water supply, 60% to 70% can come out of Mary Rhodes. And, you know, this is a more complex than simply the lake. So having the council informed on what kind of water capacity do we have? What's our contractual relationship with Texana? What is it with Garwood? And what are we looking for in this year? So these water rights expire at the end of each year. How much are we not going to take on there? How effectively are we using that pipeline? I don't know if it's a workshop, or a report, or whatever, but I think we all know how critical water is to make sure that we're managing all of our water supplies effectively and efficiently with it. So, and possibly going back for the last two or three years with it. So both the Garwood and the Texana on there, the condition of the Mary Rhodes Pipeline, how much are we going to leave on the table? How much are we not going to draw down this year in those three contracts with it? So I guess I'm asking this, but for the council as a whole. If y'all nod, say, "No, don't waste their time on it."
Yeah, that'd be a, right. That's a good idea, Councilman. We can bring that. We won't be, obviously, it's pretty complex, and we can't answer, present today on it, but we'll put a future briefing on. What we do know, what I can say, is that we know the Mary Rhodes Pipeline is aging. It was built in the 80s. And in fact, just last week, we repaired another leak. We had to take it offline. And fortunately, it was a repair that was able to be done in the morning and was repaired by midday. But the reason I bring it up is that would be the third leak this summer from a critical water supply line. So the other important thing to note, though, is that we do have in the capital budget that was approved by council, a full evaluation of the entire pipeline. It's over 100 miles, 110 miles. We're doing right now a 20-mile section of that. That was a section that had two leaks this summer and took it offline for several days, right during the drought. So that 20-mile section is being reviewed by one of our engineering consulting firms. And then in the budget, we have the entire pipeline would be reviewed for its integrity and a maintenance plan, if you will, to keep it operational. So we'll bring that forward, though, and information on Lake Texana, the Garwood, and the amount of water that we are pulling versus what we...
What our capacity is, what we actually pull on there. Because we just invested $160 million in Mary Rhodes Two. So the fact that if Mary Rhodes One is constrained on Mary Rhodes Two, is that $160 million a good investment or not? Or do we need, making sure we can pull that pipeline to capacity? We probably wouldn't be in phase one right now if we pulled that harder.
Right. We're not pulling that capacity because of the pipeline's condition. This is something that we're addressing today. We are, we tried this summer to increase the amount of water being pumped through the pipe, and that led to one of the breaks. So we backed off on that, and we're studying that 20-mile section, and then we're going to study the entire thing because of its age.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Good idea, though. We'll bring that as a future briefing to the council.
Yes, very good. Councilman Martinez?
Thank you. Along the same lines, I just want to be sure that, you know, that we're still pursuing the additional water sources that we had talked about a couple of weeks ago. I know with the rains that we had, it gave us a little bit of reprieve, and so the emergency doesn't feel like it's there. But, you know, we got to remember that the soonest that we were told one of those new projects could come online was 18 to 24 months. So, you know, we don't want to lose that time because we know that we're going to be back in that situation again. So I just want to make sure that we are still moving forward on that idea that we had to try to find those additional water sources.
Right. Yeah, thank you, Councilman. We are doing that. So specifically, the Evangeline group will be re-engaging them in the coming weeks. We told them, "Let's get through the budget first and move through some of our important desalinization work," and they were okay with that. So we're going to re-engage them. It is important to note here publicly that you all know, last week, the city did receive its water intake permit for the inner harbor for our seawater desalinization. That was unanimous vote by the TCEQ Commission. And the mayor and I were there, as well as our consultants and some of our staff, to see that and be part of that. So that is a big step for this community. We know that our biggest focus is seawater desalinization. However, these other alternative water sources, to include the Evangeline, which is something we're still evaluating from a price point perspective. And then groundwater storage and recovery is something we're looking at. Councilman Hesley brought up the affluent water. So all these are still very much in the works, as well as the new campaign to push conservation and just water awareness. The fact that some residents, I'm getting messages that they weren't aware, were still in stage one. And that's because we, as a community, haven't embraced this knowledge, that we have to be every day aware, what is our water situation? Other communities in Texas have done this for decades, and we're going to start doing this here in Corpus Christi. So it's not a guessing game. People should be aware what our water levels are. We're in a very drought-prone region, and no matter if we had desal plants or not, we still have droughts to contend with. So all that, just to say, we're still looking at those alternate sources. Councilman, thank you for bringing that up.
Councilman Hesley?
Peter, and maybe Mike Murphy can answer this. When will we start on our second part of the desalinization permit process, which is the discharge permit?
Right. Yeah, we started years ago, Councilman, so we submitted the application two years ago, over two years ago. We expect that, based on our consultant of record, Freezer Nichols, who's helping us tremendously at TCEQ, that it will be early 2023, the first part of 2023, that the commission would potentially hear that permit case. The staff, the professional staff at TCEQ is finalizing their analysis to be able to present it to the executive, chief executive of TCEQ, who then would make a recommendation to the commission, the three-member commission appointed by the governor. So we believe that, based on our intelligence and work with our own analysis with TCEQ and then our Freezer Nichols, that it's going to be the first part of 2023 before that permit would be considered by the commission.
Okay. Well, hopefully, they hurry up.
Yeah.
We agree. We're right, and as council knows, we're employing some additional help to get that moved along. We talked to council recently about that.
And Peter, I might add, because we agree, right, time is of the essence, but the reason it happened when it did is because of all of the efforts put forth, you know, last week. The efforts put forth in the last few months, I guess we could say. So, yeah, we're going to keep that moving so that they can hear this one. It really could actually be the end of this year.
It could be. They said maybe the end of this year, early next year. And the mayor's right. We do need to thank our local state delegation.
Right.
We, that's one example of saying, "We need to start trying some different techniques here to move this along."
Right.
And we really do need to thank the state delegation for the work they did to help get our intake permit on the docket and approved. So that, plus other work that we've talked to the council about, or other resources we're bringing online, we think will help. The other parts of the desalinization plant, though, are moving forward as well. Our legal team is meeting with Flint Hills to finalize the real estate contract. It would be a contingent contract based on permits, so that's nearing completion. We know that in July is when our first set of revisions went back and forth. And then the power, the power study is underway with AEP Texas. And then the funding is available. We know that we were approved some time ago for a low-interest loan by the Texas Water Development Board. And community engagement continues with the Hillcrest neighborhood. So all those pieces are in place, and the biggest one really, at this point, is that discharge permit would be the biggest one that we need to surpass to move it forward.
Peter, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment, and then we'll come back to your report.
Right.
Okay, so that's item F. Let's see. I'll ask the city attorney, Miles Rizley, to please review council rules of decorum. Miles Rizley?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Rizley. So we only have two comments, one in-person comment today and one online, I believe. So individuals will be called upon, the order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comments. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that a recording is made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address before you're beginning your comment. There are two opportunities in which you can make public comment on an agenda item. The first is at this present time. The second is at the time that the item is actually heard. Please choose one option. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone. It will let you know exactly how much time you have left. So once your time is up, you hear the buzzer, we really appreciate you wrapping up those comments and concluding. If you have a petition or any information that you'd like to give the council, if you'll please give... the council, if you'll please give it to our city secretary, Ms. Warta, she will distribute it before you begin speaking. So, with that, we will start with Mr. Ted Mandell.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ted Mandell, and I live at 15306 Key Largo Court on the island. Got a few items this morning. First, Greg, your, your time on the council here grows short. I would be remiss if, me personally, and I think for the whole community, thank you for what you've done. The knowledge that you impart on, on this council, I think, is immeasurable. You're gonna be hard to replace. You showed it this morning when you asked the water, the water questions. Thank you for your service. We're certainly gonna miss you as a champion of the airport. So, for the rest of you, we're looking for a new champion. If you got, if you're so inclined, let Kevin know. Now, I'd like to talk about a new roadway for the island. You know, as I watched the coverage of Hurricane Ian, it really struck me when the, it, uh, what island was it? It's, that's what happens when you're eighty. The Sanibel Island causeway went down. Living on a barrier island, that struck home with me. I think it's time to do something about that. You know, you guys would, I, the whole community was talking about it five years ago. When I moved here, probably well before that, it's been talked about. I know it's a tech stop project by and large. I've talked to Todd Hunter. He's talked to the Transportation Committee of the Legislature already. He seems inclined to push it forward. Federal funds are needed. I talked to Cloud's office. There's lots of money out there. I just ask you guys to get with city staff, and just be sure that there's nothing that the city needs to do that hasn't been done to move this project forward. You know, the island is growing, the causeway down, and Brownsville went down for an accident. There's lots of reasons to think about that. Last item I'd like to talk about is the airport. Does that surprise you at all?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the airport has a program going now where they want to get new air service force. It's getting real serious. They have three key initiatives for the expansion of non-stop service. The air service revenue grant, the airport fee incentive program, and the fly local pledge. The pledge campaign has been going on all year. As of today, as of this morning, since I've checked with Kevin, there were fifty-three signed pledges. I think that's an incredibly low amount for a city this size. There's been one of you, thank you, Roland, that have signed the pledge. Kevin said pledges are on the way here now. So, I encourage you to please sign those pledges when they get here, but more importantly, ask your constituents. You have a great social media presence. You can influence, influence this. I want a thousand pledges. I don't think that's too many, and that will make for a great impact upon the airline. Thank you. And Greg, good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. And Ms. Warta, do we have the web X?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, Shirin Del Souss. Are you online, Ms. Del Souss?
Yes, hi. Shirin Del Souss, 6030 Hapestry. Can you please play the video? I'm here to urge the city to consider making protected bike paths. This is a protected bike path. So, you'll see that there is a raised median. It prevents cars from swerving onto the bike lane. Protected bike paths reduce injury by ninety percent, and this is according to the American Journal of Public Health. This is not my opinion. And this is not a protected bike path. So, this is what you typically see in Corpus Christi. There's paint on the road, and people have actually died here. I want you to think of all the people, all the people who do not have access to cars. Teenagers who are trying to get to a job, seniors, people who want to exercise, people who don't have access to a driver's license for medical reasons, legal reasons, and then there are lower-income people, people who are essential workers, minimum wage earners. They cannot afford a car. It's just impossible. The rising cost of gas, the rising cost of repairs, inflation, and if we had a protected bike path, you're providing a free way to get around. Transportation needs to be accessible to everybody. So, when I heard about this Reconnecting Communities pilot grant application, this is a one-billion-dollar federal funding program, and the purpose of this is to mobilize marginalized people. This program specifically mentions public transportation and protected bike paths. This program is about helping lower-income people, the people who don't have access to other neighborhoods, the people who are left out. This is what this program is for. And when I looked at the application that you guys have, there is no mention of protected bike paths at all. Nothing. And whenever I speak to a city council member or someone in the city, they always say, oh, we can't have protected bike paths because of the cost. Okay, well, here's a program, one-billion-dollar program, and you filled out this application, and there is no mention of protected bike paths. So, the cost isn't the problem. The money is there. Why didn't you mention protected bike paths? The job of the city staff is to understand the needs of the community and work accordingly. They know about this need for protected bike paths. This is being done in all cities. Houston has plans for a thousand eight hundred miles of protected bike paths. San Antonio has hundreds, Austin as well, and all the cities in America, Canada, Mexico, around the world, in the developed nations, are all doing protected bike paths. For some reason, Corpus Christi isn't really with a program, so we really need to consider this. City staff really need to look at this application, and they really need to include protected bike paths, because the money is there. You just need to ask for it. And I want the city council members to ask why they didn't include it. One in three Americans own a bike. This isn't a hobby. This is a way people get to places. This is a way people exercise. According to the CDC, you need to exercise like thirty minutes a day, at least five times a week. So, please, consider protected bike paths, especially when the funding is there. I just want to quickly, last, say, that the, again, told me that they wanted to multimodal paths, and that's not protected bike path. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Del Souss. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Thank you, Ms. Warta. Okay, Mr. Zanoni, would you like to-
Great, yes, ma'am. So, we do have a second item here, which is, we want to recognize some of our fellow team members who completed some professional development training, and known as Six Sigma. And Scott Green, our organizational development manager, is gonna, is gonna provide an overview. The, our staff members here in these nice shirts, easily recognized. But before Scott begins, I just want to recognize the team members. They, they were nominated by their directors of the departments to go through this training to better their operations. They're, they're by and large frontline employees, and we've heard this before, that nobody knows better how to improve processes than persons working in the front line, right? So, professional development is important for us as an organization, and having professional development is critical to having a high-performing organization. So, Scott wants to talk to us a little bit about these fine individuals that have completed this training, and, and how we're gonna move forward.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Zanoni. Yes, Scott Green, organizational development manager with the Human Resources Department. And yes, earlier this year, during one of the April council meetings, Mr. Zanoni mentioned, and this initiative that we're starting with the city, this is our first cohort of the Process Improvement Team, and we put them through, through some training for Lean Six Sigma. And LSS, or Lean Six Sigma, can be described as a process improvement methodology designed to eliminate problems, remove waste, and inefficiency, and improve working conditions to provide a better response to customers' needs. So, during this partnership, we, we worked with Delmar College Corporate Services, and then we also partnered with Solomon EOS, and they have a black belt coach, Rob Ratcliffe, who led them through multiple training sessions, through some coaching sessions, gave them feedback along the way. And it all started with a call for nominees. We reached out to all the department directors and asked them all to nominate at least one or two people from their department. From that initial call for nominees, we had thirty-four nominated, and then a team of the executive leadership team sat in a room together, and we selected sixteen out of that entire group. So, obviously, not all sixteen are here this morning. Others had some other appointments they had to meet. But we wanted a diverse team with varied responsibilities from multiple departments, and we had a wide range of years of service. So, everyone from one years of service to thirty-one years of service with the city, great perspectives, great diverse experiences to be part of this team. Here's the full list, so we're not gonna go through every single one of them, but you can see, they, they come from all over the city, from City Hall, from different departments, even all the way out to the airport as well. And here's a, a photo of one of their learning events, where the coach was walking them through some Lean Six Sigma methodologies. And this is some of the work that they participated in. They completed over forty hours of training, both in-person and online. They sat through coaching sessions. They completed some project-based work. And at the end of it all, they all obtained a, they all became certified yellow belt through Solomon EOS. So, that's huge feat for them. A lot of work overtime, a lot of work on weekends, a lot of work during lunch hour, so above and beyond their normal responsibilities. And also, they were all responsible for completing and working on an individual product, project within their own department. So, that's on top of the certification process. And I want to give you some highlights of what they were able to accomplish within the first ninety days of completing their yellow belt certification. I'll give you an example. Ray Flores, Ray's here. Ray decreased, he's from Solid Waste. Ray decreased overtime by seventy-six percent, and he saved the department about fifteen thousand dollars.
Wow.
And that's huge, because the cost of all their training combined so far is about twenty thousand dollars. So, I make the joke that Ray paid for the train. So, Len Dunphy, who's with Corpus Christi Water, through strategic mapping of routes, reduced mileage on vehicles by almost two thousand miles, and saved thirty-five thousand hours in wasted travel time. And then Kevin, from the Health Department, where is that Kevin? All right. Kevin reduced intake time to the STD clinic by thirty-three percent, and reduced lab turnaround from three days to two days. So, we were able to get information and vital information back to the patients in a faster timeframe. And then Deputy Chief Breelov, he's not with us today, but he practically overhauled the way police vehicles are being outfitted. So, instead of having multiple entities involved, he was able to do some more one-stop-shop-type stuff. So, between equipment, between the vehicle wrapping and all that stuff, Chief Breelov was able to reduce a, a lot of that, just redundant work that was taking place. So, great, great job to the entire team, and that's just a few highlights of, of what they were able to accomplish in, in the short period of time. We did have a recognition event where they were able to present some of their projects, and we had these nice storyboards available, so all the departments could go through and, and sort of map their processes and get an idea of what they accomplished. And then there's a picture of them all with their certified yellow belt certificates from Solomon EOS. And then the next steps is, we're gonna take ten of these members, and we're gonna move them through the green belt process. And the green belt process handles more complex challenges, more, bigger scope, more complex, probably gonna work with multiple departments, and it's, we're, we're looking forward to moving on with this. So, we'll have another executive leadership team committee to select those folks that are gonna move on to the green belt. And I mentioned, this is Cohort One. We're gonna actually move on to Cohort Two this fiscal year. Well, we'll get another eighteen signed up, and we'll put them through the same process as well. So, I just want to thank these guys for all their work. Again, it's been above and beyond their normal duties. They work in weekends, work in extra hours, and just a round of applause for this team, Mayor.
That's awesome.
That's my update.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so much for what you're doing. This is so impressive. It's truly impressive. And this is, you know, when you hear us talking about cutting waste and, you know, being more efficient. I mean, this is it, and it, and it takes, I mean, it's amazing, who, the fifteen thousand, or all of it, really, and, and any bit, because every bit matters.
That's right.
And that just makes us all such, just a better organization. So, thank you all for, for committing to this. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, Councilman Smith?
Well, I just want to echo those comments. So, you guys look like you're part of the Blue Angels team.
I know. Yeah.
But that's a really, you know, talk about Six Sigma, the Blue Angels, I mean, they're the best of the best.
I love it.
And, and to bring a level of professionalism, you know, what is a good organization? It's, it's making the people better. You've got, and, and that's what you're doing. So, I, I truly appreciate the passion and work, and helping out each one of you, help out our three hundred and twenty-five thousand citizens every day. And that's what we're all here about, what we're here, up here for, down there, you guys out in the trenches. I, I was gonna ask for everybody to identify in the department, but Scott, you, you had the list there, but that might not be a, a great thing. But to put team on there, thank you so very much from up here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all. Have a great day.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir.
So, as Scott said, these individuals worked extra hours. They took their lunch break and worked, and they worked in the weekends. So, we do, we do know how to work as an organization, but this next item shows that we do know how to have fun as well. And so, I want to highlight to the mayor and council and the community, the sixty-first Annual Jazz Festival that is coming up this Friday through Sunday at Heritage Park. There will be music on three different stages at Heritage Park. There'll be vendors and food, and the jazz festival is free to the public and open for all ages. So, we encourage our community to come out. What started as an informal jazz concert for Delmar College students in nineteen fifty-nine is now one of the most successful jazz events in the nation, right here in Corpus Christi. There's been some great names that have performed here in the past, including Ramsey Lewis Trio, Tom Braxton, and many other musicians. Jazz festival showcases come here from across the state, including San Antonio, Austin, Houston, and from other state, New York, New Mexico, New Orleans, come here to perform. This year, the jazz festival this weekend will be actually the second one that we've had this year. You may recall, there was one in March, and that was a reschedule from the prior year because of COVID. But because of the success of it, the committee that oversees this thought it be good to have it again in the fall, as we traditionally do. The event will have forty-five craft vendors. There'll be fourteen food trucks, and we expect twenty-five thousand people to show up over that three-day period. So, this is a great event. The weather should be beautiful, and the area should have ample parking. We've made arrangements with the American Bank Center to make sure there was no big events scheduled to compromise parking. There will be free transportation, if you don't want to drive there to the actual location. You can park your vehicle here at City Hall, and our partner at the Corpus Christi Regional Transportation Authority will bus people free to the event as well, and then take them back here. So, we encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the jazz festival this weekend.
If I can add one main thing, he knew I was gonna do it. I have to, because this is one of the biggest things. So, it is wonderful, and it is, it's an honor that we are the home, right, of the largest jazz festival, free admission jazz festival in the world. And that's the biggest thing. There is no other jazz festival that is free, that has free admission, than this one. And so, it's, that's, that's, they pride themselves, that's one of the small, the smaller things they pride themselves on. But we're just so grateful that this is home, and not only this, meaning Corpus Christi, but Heritage Park. Heritage Park is their home. And there is something to be said about that. You'll have to go, if you haven't been, and find out, because there is just a, the feel of the jazz festival at Heritage Park is just, it's just right. The ambiance of all of it is. And so, I, I, I'll be there Friday, and we'll be reading a proclamation Friday evening. And so, I absolutely encourage everyone to join us. It's free, and so, lots of fun there. And you see everyone you know there.
Right. Yes, ma'am. I'll be there as well. And if somebody-
Let me add, Cindy and I met there in October of nineteen ninety-nine.
Oh, wow. Well, then, you better be there. Awesome. What song was playing?
What were you singing?
Kenny G, Kenny G. Wonderful.
Yeah. Good job, Councilman. I'll have those in my remarks next year to make sure. Forget about Delmar College, right?
Yeah.
Hey, and then if folks want to see who is on the lineup, you can go to the website. I don't know if they're gonna put up the graphic, but it's texasjazz/fest, right there at the bottom, dot org. So, if you go to that website, you can see over the three days who will be performing. So, texasjazz-fest.org will get you the program guide. And Mayor, I know we're running up on time here, but just one final thing that is important. I know you had a proclamation today, and Johnny Staub's was there dressed in pink, but we do want to repeat that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as many know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and it's an opportunity to raise awareness about the disease and funding research into its causes, treatment, and cure. Since nineteen eighty-five, individuals, businesses, and communities have come together every October to show their support. Some statistics, breast cancer is the second most common cancer in women after skin cancer. Breast cancer is also the second most deadly cancer in women. So, it's important that we talk about it and find funding to find a cure. More than a quarter million women are diagnosed with breast cancer every year, one quarter of a million women every year. The, recently, our Health District, for this year, has come up with a, a service that we want to highlight today. The Corpus Christi Nuasis County Health District and the city's Human Resources Department kicked off a breast cancer awareness campaign using social media. The campaign emphasizes how important it is for women to have annual checkups. So, in addition to social media campaign, the, this team is providing, with a, with a partner advisor, with a partner of ours, Assured Imaging, we're partnering with them- advisor, with a partner of ours, Assured Imaging, we're partnering with them for three-day mobile mammogram events, October 18 through Thursday, October 20. The employees, spouses, and the general public, so employees of the city, spouses, or even the general public, can schedule appointments, and if you don't schedule, the walk-ins are available. And all major insurance is accepted, and the results are sent to the patient and primary care provider. So the onsite mammogram screening events include, there's four different events here. Event number one will take place on Tuesday, October 18, from 8 to noon at the Corpus Christi Police Department on John Sutrain Street. You can see on the screen, event number two will take place from 1:00 PM to 4:30 at our Water Utilities Department on Holly Road. This is where that mobile mammogram clinic will be. Event number three will be at City Hall, specifically on the parking lot of Staples and Leopard Street. And that'll be on Wednesday from 8 to 5. So that all-day event is, is event number three. And then the fourth event will take place Thursday, October 20, from 8 to 5 at our Health District.
Friday.
So encourage people to, did you say Friday?
Right.
Friday, the 20th, okay. Right, I'm sorry. Yeah, it says Thursday here in my thing, but you're right. So Friday on the 20th, that'll be at our Health Department Building on Horn Road. So participants should bring, you can see here, their insurance card. Insurance is accepted. Bring a picture ID, referral. You can schedule an appointment on the bottom of the graphic here. You can see online how to schedule it, or call the number 888-233-6121. So this is an added amenity for the community. And then finally, we want to recognize we do see all the council members and the mayor wearing pink today. But Real Men Wear Pink Campaign is another unique way for men in the community to raise funds and draw attention to fighting breast cancer. We do have several ambassadors that participate in this initiative. I am one of those, and Moses Mastigachi is another one as well. He's been pretty faithful in wearing pink last year and this year as well. Wearing pink through October helps to raise awareness for the cause through these individuals' personal, professional, and social media networks. Each person is asked to raise a minimum of 2,500 through their sponsorship of, of this initiative. So it's not too late to nominate a leader in your community to wear pink through the month of October. And on the bottom of this graphic, you can see the website to go to, Real Men Wear Pink ACS for AmericanCancer.org South Texas is the website to go to. So that concludes our briefing for today, Mayor, and I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That'll put us to our consent agenda, items five through 18. Councilman, do we have any requests to pull an item?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item 11, please.
Okay, item number 11 we'll pull. Anyone else? Okay, there being no one else. I'm sorry. Oh, yes. That would be item number...
11.
Uh, 17? 17. Yes, item number 17, Councilman. Okay, item number 17.
And Mayor, I just want to add, I don't want to have, I don't want to pull it, but item number 16 is in District 3 now. It says, indicates on the, the information District 5.
Okay, the Woolridge?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's District 3. We'll take note of that. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, items number 5 through 18, with the exception of item number 11 and item number 17.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion-
If we can take a moment also to have Mr. Hernandez vote. He needs to be on, on screen to vote, for his vote to count.
Is he voting?
I thought he was.
Aye.
Did you vote, Gil? Aye? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion carries. So item number 11 was pulled, and this is an ordinance authorizing execution of all documents necessary to accept, amend, and appropriate an emergency connectivity fund grant from the Federal Communications Commission. Now, who pulled this one? Oh, did you have a question, sir?
Well, the reason I pulled it, a little bit of explanation to the public, this is a real good news item on there, that we've got 5,000 hotspots. What is a hotspot? And if, for the public to know, how can you take advantage of this? And it started in July, so we currently, do we currently have those hotspots? But just explain, what is a hotspot? How the public, what's the cost on there, and, and how you can be helped out by this, this great grant?
Yes, sir. So my name is Alan Carlos. I'm the Assistant Director of Library Technology. And definitely, this is a good news item. So what is a hotspot is, I mean, think of the libraries historically. You know, we've always been here to help the community by providing internet, but you would have to come to the library to actually use our, our Wi-Fi access points. You know, there's a story, I went to, I was, I'm from San Agilo, Texas, and I was visiting my, my, my daughter once, I mean, my, my sister once. It was a Sunday, and I drove by her house, and I said, "Hey, why are there a lot of people at the library? There's, there's, there's several people lined up at the library. Aren't they closed?" And she says, "Yes, they're closed, but they're there for the internet." So people go to the libraries to access the internet, right? So, I mean, those are things we don't think about, right? But to, to put things in perspective, with this program, we actually get 5,000 hotspots that we could distribute to the community. They'll be able to use these hotspots at their house, you know, at Starbucks, anywhere that, that someone needs internet. Think of it as maybe like internet in a box. We always joke about internet in a box. That's what it is. It's a small device that's the size of your cellphone, where, you know, wherever you go, you have the internet. Of course, you would need a device, like a phone, a cellphone, or a laptop, but with this device, this cellphone and laptop will also have access to the internet for educational purposes, for, you know, advancing people's opportunities as far as the workforce. So, you know, opportunities are endless.
Yeah, thank you. And Councilman Smith, thank you for pulling it, because you're absolutely right. This is $2.4 million in, in federal monies that you all applied for. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is extremely important to families and children who otherwise don't have it, or, as you said, have to go find it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no.
And Mr., just, I'm sorry, just so we can, Mr. Hernandez, we're gonna, Mr. Hernandez, are you voting on this one?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries. So item number 17 is also pulled. A motion awarding a construction contract to South Texas Building Partners, Inc. for the Art Center of Corpus Christi repairs and improvements in the amount of over $2.2 million. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Mayor, the reason I asked this to be pulled, we've had some discussions about the, some of the issues surrounding the Art Center, one of which was when they've had events down there in the past where they utilized their outdoor courtyard area and had food trucks come there, there were not, there weren't any places provided where food trucks could plug in for electricity or whatever. And we talked about maybe possibly doing that. So instead of having a line of trucks with generators running outside of that where you can't hear anything inside the courtyard, we would try to help. Do you know if that's, was talked about or considered in this process?
That was not part of this scope.
Okay.
This came out of a study that was commissioned and funded by Type A. We hired an architect that did an assessment of the building and came up with pretty much a laundry list of deficiencies. It's mostly building envelope kind of things, and then we bundled that into a bid package, and that's what this project is.
Okay.
And could that be considered though, Mr. Hernandez, or?
Yeah, yeah. So Councilman Pusley, the, the Art Center Leadership Group, the board, is working to develop a master plan for the area, and that certainly is in that master plan. We will be ready for the next bond program to potentially add a project to Bond 2024, or sooner, to address something of those sorts. But there is a master plan underway for that area, as well as the road, the former road behind it, so.
Every time I ask about something, there's a master plan being developed.
There's a master plan. There's a lot of-
All we have to do is live long enough to see one of those come to fruition.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilman Lerma.
Thank you, Mayor. Does this also include, since we're in the courtyard area, I remember that when we had a function there, the announcement, the speaker system was really horrible. So that's not even going to be addressed in this either?
Well, this was really just looking at deficiencies to the building.
Well, that's a deficiency. You couldn't hear anyone speaking. Badly, let me tell you.
Well, we must have missed that one, but no, that's not included in this scope.
Okay.
We'll talk to the, we'll talk to the leadership there to see where that is, because that was about, over a year ago that that event took place.
Yes, sir.
So they should have a remedy by now.
And where is the, I'm sorry, you're done. Yeah, and so that's, that's good, because obviously there's some things, that sounds, these things sound a little bit more operational.
Yes.
Which is extremely important, and leads to my question. Are we, what is the plan for the building? Because we, you know, Citrus is no longer there, so there isn't a restaurant there. So what is, 2.2 million, I mean, it's a lot of money to, to invest. I'm not saying we should, or, I'm not saying it's worthwhile or not. Obviously, the building needs attention, and that, that can be very expensive. Details of this is obviously in our, in our packet, but what is the plan for this building?
Right. So just, as a reminder, the city owns that building.
Right.
That's a city, city-owned building. And about a year ago or so, the city council renewed the lease with the Art Center Group, the nonprofit organization, I think for 20 years. I don't have an answer to your question, Mayor, but we'll get one for you. We'll sit down with the leadership there to better understand. We know that Citrus has been vacated out of there for probably two years or so, but that's a prime place for a restaurant. We know that another restaurateur was interested in going in there, but I think those talks broke down. So let us find out for you, and we'll, we'll report back to the city council on that.
And is that, those talks, if someone's, if someone is interested, is it city staff that speaks with them, or is it?
It's the, no, it's the leadership at the Art Center that speaks with them, because they, they're operating the building, so any sublease or any tenant is their purview, not the city's.
Hmm.
Don't we have approval on it at all?
We don't have any approval. We can provide input, that's what we'll do. We'll sit down with the leadership there.
Well, we, I think we need to look at it all together, right, to see what, what is happening, or what, I mean, that, that needs to be utilized.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that, and we'll report back to the council.
I just, Mayor, I think you make excellent point. I just have a really hard time of spending $2.2 million of taxpayers' money when we don't even have a basic plan on what we're going to do with that building. The restaurant's not there anymore. We don't know what the leadership, whoever that is, is going to decide or not decide about what they're going to utilize that building for. And so we're just going to go dump $2 million into it, and we have no plan about what we're going to do with it. It just doesn't sound like a smart business decision.
Let me make a couple of comments about that. One, it's maybe a little bit semantic, but this is being funded out of the sales tax, out of the seawall sales tax, and that's based on the bond council ruling that anything on that side of ocean shoreline is eligible for the seawall CIP. So that's, that's where the funding is coming from. And all of this work is just aimed at preservation of the condition of the asset.
Yeah, okay. So Diane Bluntzer is the Executive Director, if you, just to make you aware. So Diane Bluntzer is the Executive Director. There is a board of, a governing board as well. Diane is telling me that a new restaurant works, underway with the leadership in interviewing a new restaurant that can grow with them, is what Diane's saying. And, but the, but this is a city asset, and it does have some significant deficiencies, including water infiltration, an AC system that doesn't work, and a leaking roof. And so it's another one of those legacy issues we're trying to address to protect the taxpayer investment of the building.
We, we also own, we own the art museum, or the city owns the art museum as well, right?
Yes, sir. We just led a similar contract for there, just, it was, I think, last month.
Right. Well, and, and I, I agree with you. I feel like, and Peter, I guess, it's, it's a delicate balance, because on one hand, we must maintain. We can't afford to allow the building to, you know, fall apart, if you will. And looking at this, $820,000 of this is roof.
Right.
So are we replacing the roof? I'm just-
Sections, so certain sections of the roof need to be replaced. The, they got a, the Art Center folks got a grant, actually, from the Rochelle Foundation to replace portions of the roof, the flat section. But the pitch tile roof needs to be replaced as well. That wasn't done as part of their original scope. So maybe just some background context for the council. Three and a half years ago, when I started here, I met with the leaders of these city facilities, including the Art Center, the museum, the Art Museum, and the History and Science Center. And the report to me was that I was the first person from the city in, in years to engage them. And they actually said that when the city, when they would call over here to get help from the city, they pretty much had to hang up. You know, they, so what we did is, all of them said, "Our buildings, your buildings, city are falling apart. We've asked for help. We need help." So we commissioned a study to assess the buildings by one of our engineering firms. They looked at all three buildings to see what are the deficiencies in the buildings, what are the most critical paths going forward to maintain taxpayer investment in the buildings. And this is the outcome of that. So as Jeff said, the art museum contract went to council recently. Prior to that, the, the Science and History Museum went to council as well for approval. And this is the third one. So they were all in the, in the approximate $1 to $2 million range, all funded by Type A, B sales tax monies. But that's what this is from. It's not just something that we dreamed up. It's from-
And I stand corrected, Peter, 820 was the higher bidder, 325,000 is, is for the, for the roof.
So on this one, it's a beautiful facility. There is some, and we'll have Diane come in maybe and explain to the council, but they have some significant art grassroots programming that's free to the community. It's a beautiful venue. Every Wednesday, the farmer's market takes place there.
Well, I, I would just say, Peter, this is another example, like I brought up here a few weeks ago, about commissions and boards that we appoint and we never hear from.
Right.
We ought to schedule a regularly update from the art museum folks, the Art Center folks, the museum folks.
Right.
The council needs to know what's going on. If they call over here and won't help, if the council doesn't know what they need help on, are we positioned to do that?
We can do that. Yeah, that's a great, great idea. We'll do that.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion we approve.
Well, I think we have-
That's okay, Mayor. I mean, I just wanted to make sure.
But Rebecca wanted to say-
I just want to say, those aren't city boards and commissions, just so. They're, they're private.
Yeah, he was just using that as an example to say.
And the other thing, Peter, is, is he is just getting a briefing, too. I mean, we can bring him all in, of course, but-
We'll do a briefing.
A briefing's fine. If, like, say she can't for some reason. But I will leave it before, and Councilman Lerma and Smith have a comment. But my biggest concern is, is having, we, we need to know what's happening with, who's coming forth to want to rent the restaurant space, if they are. And if they're not, why? I mean, we just have to be more engaged in part of that, even if it's subleased. So, Councilman Smith?
Thank you. And then Councilman Pusley, some excellent thoughts on that. As a community, we have five of these buildings that I'm aware of that provide a very important public service. They're run by nonprofits on there, helping out our community. And we've got a number of, of smaller ones, like the Heritage Park's full of them with it. But, you know, we've, we've got the Little Theater, the three museums on there, the, the Art Center. So having this body better briefed on it, and, and having those organizations, what are their plans? So the Art Center, they've got a 20-year lease, a 20-year horizon. What, what are their plans? The Art Museum of South Texas, iconic, but having us know, we've had better briefs on the history, Natural History Museum, but we've got Oriental Cultures out there. That's a nice little museum, again, it's city-owned. The Ballet Academy, we did a lease for the Ballet Academy on there, where we're responsible for the maintenance of all these buildings. So a better flow of information might be very helpful.
Right, yeah. I appreciate that, Councilman. We'll bring that forward to you.
Yeah.
And if I can add, since we're on the topic, so the Science and History Museum, I'll be meeting with Alan Wilson, who's the Board Chair, this evening. We're, we were going to do it for, yesterday at noon, but we canceled, we're going to do it tonight. But we, we're looking at a contract extension, because they're in the process of recruiting an executive director, and they have less than a year left on their current contract. And we know that's going to be tough to recruit top talent when your contract could expire in less than a year. So we're going to talk to him this evening. So I'll be back to council soon on that one for a potential extension to the contract, short of a process. And then after some time, we'll come back with a process, just to put it on your radar.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Lerma, did you want to say?
I just wanted to say that I support this part. I think it's money well spent. We just need to get more briefings of a bunch of these organizations that are running them for us.
Okay.
But I'm in big support of it. I'll second the motion that Councilman Pusley.
Perfect. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez? Mr. Hernandez, are you going to vote?
No.
Okay. Any opposed, say no. Okay, the motion carries. And that will take us to item K, Public Hearings, items number 19 and 20. Item number 19 is case number 0622-02, Diamond Beach Holdings- Item number 19 is case number 0622-02, Diamond Beach Holdings in District 4.
Good afternoon, Nina Nixon-Mendes, Assistant Director. The rezoning case before you is case number 0622-02. The applicant is Diamond Beach Holding LLC, and the property is located at 14353 Commodores Drive. And the property's platted, and it is 242.011 acres in size. The rezoning request is from the RS6 Single Family 6 District, RS4.5 Single Family 4.5 District, and CR2 Resort Commercial District to the RS4.5 Single Family 4.5 District Planned Unit Development. This is the site of the former Waves Resort, for which in May of 2022, the city council approved the White Cat Public Improvement District Number 1 to assist with infrastructure improvements. The purpose of the request is to allow a waterfront development with a mix of single-family, two-family, multifamily districts with retail and commercial areas, and public parks and preserves. The subject property is in the Padre Mustang Island Area Development Plan. The future land use map designates the area for commercial use, and the rezoning will warrant an amendment to the future land use map. The adjacent land uses to the north are vacant and townhome condos. To the south, low-density residential across White Cat Boulevard. East is vacant, and then a little bit beyond that is the Compass Plaza and some townhomes. And then on the west, low-density residential and also vacant property. In the next couple of slides, we'll illustrate the site's master plan. And notice that the north is, north is to the right. The development is bound by Aquarius Street and Commodores Drive on the north, Compass Street, South Padre Island Drive, Nemo Court and Canals on the east, White Cat Boulevard on the south, and near Dos Marines Drive on the west. There will be five entrances into the subdivision. There will be one off White Cat Boulevard near Gypsy Street, two access points on Aquarius Drive, one on Commodores Drive near East Cabana Street, and one on Compass Street. This is an overview of the proposed development, and the rendering shows the canal concept for the development. The Parks and Open Space Plan shows the nature preserve and neighborhood parks that are interconnected through a pedestrian and cart-accessible networks, and those are shown with a red line. The nature preserve with ponds are the darker color in the illustration, and the green-hatched areas show the neighborhood parks. Note that the majority of the adjacent existing residential areas will be buffered by canals. At least 30% of the development will be parks and open space. The development will occur in four phases, starting with the northern portion of the site, and there will be a projected 10-year build-out. There was a traffic impact analysis submitted and accepted by our Public Works Department, and the developer would be responsible for improvements related to that, and that would include restriping and traffic signals. Phase 1 is restriping for left-turn lanes at Commodores Drive and Cabana Street, at Compass Street, and at White Cat Boulevard and Gypsy. After Phase 2, a traffic signal will be required at Commodores Drive and Cabana Street, and at White Cat Boulevard and Gypsy. After Phase 3, there will be restriping of the southbound approach with White Cat Boulevard and Park Road 52, with two turn lanes and a through lane, which is recommended, and that is still under review by text, that particular portion. This section, sector plan defines where the short-term rentals will and will not be allowed. The yellow indicates where short-term rentals will not be allowed along most of Dos Marina's Drive, and the green indicates where they will be allowed. A canal will provide a buffer along the portion of Dos Marina's Drive near White Cat Boulevard where short-term rentals will be allowed.
And Nina, can I just, just pause on that for a moment?
Yes.
It's an important topic. So as you can see, the, there is, there has been some expressed concern by existing single-family residential properties that short-term rentals would be right next to them. But Ashlar Development and their designers have strategically kind of buffered them away from the existing single-family residential development by that yellow buffer or by canals. So short-term rentals, while they are part of this development, will be well away from, and far away from existing residential homes. That's important to highlight here to the council. Thanks, Nina.
Okay. This table shows the acreage allotted to each of the sector plans. There's three sector plans in the unit development. The Sector 1 is for single-family development, and that has 99, about 99 acres. And then the part that, of Sector 1 that is non-short-term rental is about 47 acres. Sector 2, which provides for single-family and townhome, is roughly 31 acres. And then Sector 3 is around 63.9 acres, and that will have primarily resort, commercial uses. And, you know, just keep in mind that a portion of this property is currently zoned CR2. So again, sort of in keeping with the current zoning. Okay, and again, here's a visual of the sector plan that shows the location of the sectors. Again, the yellow depicting the area allowing short-term rentals in the hatched area. And in Section 2, you have single-family and townhomes, and that's sort of a brown color. And then with Sector 3 in red, that allows for the uses which are currently allowed in the CR2 zoning district. And that can be a mixture of multifamily and commercial uses. The next couple of tables show the deviations, and just a real quick summary of that. For Sector 1, if you look at the top of the, of the table, you'll see that there are four proposed single-family types that will be provided for. There's a standard lot, a medium lot, large lot, and estate lot, and these range from 4,500 square feet to 8,400 square feet. And the deviations are noted in red, and they consist of corner setbacks, rear yard setback, maximum height, and lot coverages. And Sector 2, again, this would be single-family and townhome. The deviations, again, are noted in red. There are the lot widths, maximum height, and maximum lot coverage, right-of-way, street width, and curb type. And in Sector 3, again, there's a maximum height for both residential and non-residential development, curbs, and no limit on lot coverage for the deviations. But again, keep in mind, the overall development will have 30% open space. This slide shows the four types of multimodal roads that will be part of the planned unit development. Roadway Type 1 includes a road of 46-foot right-of-way with a 22-foot roadway section, an 8-foot bioswale, 5-foot sidewalk, a 3, 3-foot buffer, and 8-foot street parking with interval street trees. And again, the bioswales are part of the low-impact development to mirror the drainage conditions beneficial to the stormwater quality. And roadway Type 2, it's the same street type, but it's in reverse, so it's a mirror. We have Type 3, which is 50 feet of right-of-way, 9-foot shared path, that would be for both bicycles and pedestrians, 24-foot of roadway, and 12 feet for a laned cart path. And again, this would function like a collector roadway. And then finally, you have the fourth road type with 70-foot right-of-way, 8-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, and two 24-foot roadways with a 6-foot landscape median. And these are located at entrances and provide a parkway appearance. We did have an update to our public notification. We received seven notices, opposed, and seven in favor. There were 437 notices mailed inside the 200-foot buffer. And in terms of comments of the opposition, there was concern related to the short-term rentals. There was concern related to taxing the island infrastructure with the development. And then there was concern related to density. And so the project does meet the objectives of planned unit developments articulated in the UDC and shown on this slide. Staff does recommend approval to rezone the property to RS4.5 PUD. On August 10th, Planning Commission recommended approval. They also had some additional recom, or assurances that they wanted that includes that the PUD conformed to the right-of-way sections as designed and presented, including the bioswales. Define the noise and visual separation for short-term rentals, and confirm access for emergency traffic. This language has been added to the ordinance, and staff does concur with that language. And I stand by for questions.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Nina. How many lots are we looking, single-family lots?
Okay, I don't have that number. You would need to ask the applicant.
Is the applicant here?
They have Jeff Coim with LJA, who's the engineer of record, is here. Jeff, you wanna?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. Jeff Coim with LJA Engineering. There's approximately 632 total lots that we have on this entire master plan community, excluding the commercial zones.
Okay, so we'd be adding 632 single-family.
Correct.
And Nina said a traffic study was done. Was there any comparison made to it, to the old Slitter Bond traffic study?
Yes, there was. I don't recall exactly what the delta was between the two, but this, this impact was probably more just a little bit than the Slitter Bond was.
So it's comparable to...
Comparable, yes, sir.
Slitter Bonds on there, with it. We, we saw the road sections. I, I thought the bioswales are very interesting, 8 feet wide, and that kind of adds to a yard, so to speak, correct? It's a landscaping area. It's a, a place for the water to go and percolate within the soils and stuff. So e, even though these are tight lots on there, there's, with this road section, that will give it a lot more open look. Is that a correct or a mistake?
And no, sir, that's correct. And if you look at the back of the ordinance that was attached to your agenda, the last page shows a street section plan view of what the developer's proposing there, that really lays everything out as far as spacing, and when you think about bioswales, think about what was done just in front of the Ortiz Center down at the port. We did that job for the port. And those are a larger-scale bioswale, but it's the same type of landscape in zero scape that'll be used in this application, just a smaller scale.
And the existing ponds, lakes on there, are they basically staying?
Yes, sir.
The old golf goo?
The centralized ponds are, yes, sir, and the ones surrounding the Whiskys subdivision, if you will.
Mm-hmm. And so the acreage you talked about, parks, was actually exclusive of that, correct?
Right. I believe there's around 50 acres of total green space with the pocket parks that we have within the community, as well as the preserve itself being about half of that, 25.
Do we, do we know how parking-wise it compares to Cinnamon Shores, that, that design with it?
I don't know exactly. It'll be similar. Our bowl bouts are 8 feet. We've got a 22-foot section on smaller right-of-way width, the 46. So we've got a 22-foot road, and then an 8-foot parking that's interval. And I, I do want to reiterate that that 46-foot right-of-way and that configuration is really only 20% of the development. The rest of it jumps up to 50 and, and 70-foot right-of-way. So it's a small portion that we're, we're using that on.
Well, and I think our typical PUDs, we go a lot smaller than 46 feet.
From what I've seen, yes.
And, and one comment, you, you go out to the island, the old development has no sidewalks on there. So th, this is adding a level of mobility that we don't have. There wasn't much talk about the canal size, access points. Is that part of this PUD that allows public access?
Yes, there are several public parks within the community to where anybody within this community, as well as outside community, will have access to launching kayaks and things like that along the water's edge in certain locations.
So in, in this project, we'll have areas, as opposed to the existing subdivisions, where you can go and actually get to the water without jumping off a 4-foot bulkhead?
Or walking down a boat ramp, that's correct.
And on, on your parking, we're in Texas here with big, long trucks and stuff, so did you design to accommodate that?
Yes, sir, we did. And if you go to that same page, sheet 40 of the ordinance, there's actually an F-250 marked in there, as if it would have been parked in the driveway, and it shows it clearly not impeding the ADA sidewalk route.
Okay, okay. And one, one last thing. I, I know the STR issue, it, it's a huge issue on the island for it, in the existing subdivisions. This is a new subdivision, so any purchaser coming in, they know the rules with it. But on, in our packet, on page 286, it's White Cat Preserve PUD Sector Plan, and then we've got 319 on there. They don't reconcile. And so I, I've hoped next week, if we do approve it today, that those two exhibits on there, that in the 286, it, it shows areas that Sector 1 that you could do. It's, it's mainly your open space and park space with it. But having the page 319 be the document, not have that 286 in there, I think would be helpful, because everything that you have told us, we're following along with the, the public's desire, or the consensus of the public. And, and I want to thank the developers for taking that into consideration, that you are having areas, the areas adjacent to the existing neighborhoods, you're not allowing STRs on there. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir, and if, if I may, the developer has asked for a small request in the language that was put into the ordinance here as far as designing the noise and visual separation. Given that we are doing that buffer distance shown on the map for STRs, we wanted to strike through that language in the ordinance. It wasn't originally submitted. That was a comment by the Planning Commission, and we just feel we've, we've already kind of gone above and beyond with the, with the separation. So just for consideration.
Well, if, if we make amendments, then we've got to go look at Rebecca and make all kinds of motions and modifications and everything else.
Sir?
Okay, yeah, I, I think maybe in the next go-around, what's the best way?
Second reading, possibly?
Well, the consensus of the council, of course, but, so we have a... Nina, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the Exhibit H satisfies the concerns of the Planning Commission, because it articulates the location of the non-short-term rentals, the short-term rental allowances. So I think we're okay with striking that language, and so essentially, you would be removing the phrase, and it's under Section 1, and you would remove the phrase "define noise and visual separation" from proposed short-term rentals.
Okay, and, and one, one last comment on this. I, I mentioned earlier, the existing island doesn't have any sidewalks. You get on the Lake Padre side, you do, do have some, but that, that was designed 50 years ago, and this will give us island product on there. It's 21st century with it. There was an article in the Caller Times last week. It had the 10 highest-listing properties in, in Corpus Christi. And fi, five of those were on the island with it. But I went and I, I looked up in Port Aransas, and in Port Aransas, you've, you've got 21st century product on there. If you included Port Aransas there, the top 10 would all be in Port Aransas. So it, it, it shows you the, the market that's, that's sitting out there, and, and these folks coming in and, and bringing something in there to today's standards, to today's styles, and you, you didn't touch, I, I touched briefly on being able to launch your kayaks and, and things like this, but part, part of this project... like this, but part of this project ties in the canals, correct? With it, and I guess there's a future. It's designed to go under Commodores?
Yes, sir, that's correct. There's a bridge under design right now that's going to be routed through city approvals.
With city, it's not part of what we're okaying today, but it's part of your master plan.
Yes, sir.
And the importance of this, with the island, you have three kind of areas going there. They're all separated by boats. If you want to go from one spot to another, you're putt-putt-putting at no wake at five miles an hour, and a turtle can get there faster than you can take a boat. But what they're looking, marine mobility on there, kind of making it a Venice of Texas with there, that it really enhances that ability, whether you're kayaking, paddleboarding, you have a motorized unit, or who knows in the future, electric solar-powered boats. But it does that, and very importantly, on your water quality there, the canals on the island are low-water quality. The POA puts the aerators in there, trying to get the oxygen levels up to a minimum standard on there. But this circulation on there, I call it the green water coming out of the Gulf, that environment is just going to change 100%. So it's truly a game-changing project for the island and the city with it. It potentially could add a billion dollars in tax base. That's like adding another 4% in our total city tax base. Right now, our tax base is 24 billion with it. So it expands our tourism and things. A lot of pluses on there, and of course, there are some minuses, that yes, we'll see increased traffic on there with it, of course. It's going to put more loads on infrastructure, things we addressed earlier. But overall, I thank you all, Arnie, Steve, Charles out there. I see Brad kind of sitting behind, but he's not part of it. But hopefully, we're getting to the end of a very long journey here. So thank you.
Councilman Pusly.
Yeah, I just, a couple of questions or comments, and I guess Councilman Smith could probably address this better than anybody, since he's a district rep. What has our public outreach been with respect to this project? Has this been through like the Island Strategic Committee, whatever it's called, ISAC? And have presentations been made to those groups, Padre Island Properties Owners Association, all those groups?
Yes, sir, Councilman. And prior to our meeting where we rolled this project out to you back in April, we actually had a public outreach on the private side that we hosted for the adjacent residents along Dos Marinos, as well as in the Whiskies, where we brought them all in, we showed them the plan, we told them what we were proposing. We got their feedback, and we actually incorporated some of that into the plan. So that was done all ahead of time, before the public announcement went out for the zoning change, so.
And at ISAC, Jeff, did you guys, are you a member of ISAC?
I'm not a member, but Jay Gardner in my office is obviously the chair, so he knows well, aware of this project, and they've discussed it with Padre Island's POA as well.
Right. All right. Good. And another question I had is, this all going to be designed golf cart-friendly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. So I'll close it out. Outside of wanting to jump up and down, this is huge. This is, we're the eighth-largest city in Texas. It is developments like this that kick us up a notch. This is 4%, 4% of the entire city's tax base in this development. And what does that really mean? That means there is investment in this city that is serious, that is real. You guys saw the pictures. That is a picture. This is going to be unbelievable. And I always say it, and I will say it today, this kind of development means, and it is why we say it is a new day in Corpus Christi. And in the next five to seven to eight years, we're going to look back at this. And Greg, thank you for your leadership on this, because there are, you know, it's not to say there aren't concerns, of course there are, but you worked those out. You worked those out. All of these cities we talk about, they had these issues. They planned this development. They dealt with the challenges. And I'm just super excited that we are a part of literally moving this city forward, and there are more to come. You all know that. There are more lined up, because we're on the map, and people want to be here. And we have something that the rest of this country, very few have, and that is that natural resource. You cannot live on that water anywhere in this country, the way you can in this city. So we're rejoicing today on this item. I am very excited. I can't wait to start the ribbon-cutting and the shoveling of dirt and sand, the equipment out there, because that is real to this city. So thank you all. Thank you, Jeff, your wonderful partner of the city on many projects, and of course, Jay as well, but to this council for supporting exactly what we are striving for. We don't want to stay the eighth-largest city. We want to stay the seventh, the sixth, the fifth. We can skip a couple numbers even. So thank you for being a part of that. We appreciate it. This is a wonderful day for Corpus Christi. Mr. Zenoni.
Mayor, yeah, well said. I just wanted to thank Steve Yetz for being here. He's the developer, Ashland Developer, world-class developer, and we appreciate him being in the presence today.
Yes, we do.
And we want to thank Jeff Coim, too, from the local office of LJA Engineering. They've done a great job, as he just said, with public engagement, public outreach, very important to this council and community. So thank you both for being here today.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, thank you. Mr. Pusly.
I agree, Mayor. This is a great project, and we're all very excited about it, and it'll be a great addition to the city of Corpus Christi. Peter, you know, Mr. Mandell made a very appropriate comment this morning, and with respect to this development coming on, and we all know there's others coming behind this, the need for better routes off of the island now are going to be extremely critical. I know Councilman Hernandez has brought this up numerous times, and I know it's been brought to the MPO. I don't know where they are. MPO has always been, in my opinion, a great place for good ideals to go die. So hopefully, we can resurrect that. And, but we need to really seriously start discussing this, because if you put another 650 residents living on that island, and you have a disaster like a hurricane moving in, you can't evacuate people fast enough. And you'll absolutely strand people if you don't have a better plan. So we have to do this.
Yeah, that conversation has begun, and the mayor can speak to it. She has a meeting coming up with Rob McDonald of the MPO, but it's on their planning list, the bridge, the alternative bridge, as well as the 361 highway expansion. In fact, in the state's Transportation Committee meeting that was here last Thursday, that the mayor and I attended, that conversation came up in the hearing at the port. So expanding 361 to more than a two-lane road, and making sure we put forward some strong efforts for an alternative bridge system onto the island is very much in progress. Mayor, I don't know if you want to talk about your meeting?
Yes, no, well said. That, along, because you're right, and those are the challenges I'm talking about that we have to address. We can't just plan these wonderful developments and then forget about the traffic and just the infrastructure. So that is definitely one that, through the MPO, we're talking about moving up that item or that project from the list, because it isn't. It isn't at the top of the list, and because of the growth, it has to be. So we are having those conversations, as well as grants, the RACE grant. That's another perfect grant for a project such as this that is regional. So we'll definitely continue working on that. And I think Councilman Hernandez has a comment. Rebecca, does he just come on?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilman Pusly for recognizing my support for the regional parkway. But I'd also like to take some credit for creating that paid policy back a couple of years ago that allowed this project to move forward. And I'd be remiss not to take some credit, but I'd also like to thank Dan McGinn for his work on this as well. I think sometimes you don't get credit for some of the things that we've done in the past to address these things. But the only concern I did have on this, and I know they have some little out props for parking, but in terms of that parking situation with the 22-foot road, did we get all the sign-offs from the fire department for that?
Yes, the proposal has been reviewed by our technical review committee, of which the fire department is a member.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a record.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. So I'm going to go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number 19? Okay, applicant, would you like to say any words? Steve, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Yetz, Ashland Development Company, Los Colinas, Texas. Not really a lot to say, other than we are very honored to be a part of this project and to be invited in by IBC to bring this project forward. And I have really appreciated not only our relationship with LJA and our other team members that we have, but the cooperation and collaboration with the city. And it's been great. We just want to hurry up and get this thing going. If you've driven by it, you've seen that we've moved a lot of sand right now, and we're very excited about getting the project moving forward, selling some lots, and getting some homes and residents out there on the project as soon as possible. So it's just very exciting for us, and we really enjoy working with Corpus and the staff, so.
Thank you, Steve.
You bet.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Mr. Smith has a comment.
Like you mentioned, you moved a lot of sand. So Steve, could you just quickly brief us on where you are right now with your canal construction on there, bulkhead construction?
Yes, sir, I can. We have, the amount of sand that will be moved, or dirt will be moved for this entire project is about a million yards. We're into about 600,000. So we're a little over halfway completed with the canal construction, the grading, anyway. We have about 36,000 feet of bulkhead, and we're into it, we've installed about 3,000 feet right now. So we're just getting ramped up with the bulkhead contractor. And then after this approval here, we'll be pushing LJA and the team to get the plaits approved and getting our lots on the ground as soon as possible.
And you did all of this under a excavation permit correctly? So you were following all the rules and guidelines of the city? You can go ahead and excavate without that?
Yes, sir.
And the reason I'm bringing this up, so often in this body, we see these glorious plans on there, and all this is going to happen and everything else, but the point we're making is, it's actually underway. Millions of dollars have already been spent. This isn't a project in the future, but it's a project that is funded, it's happening right now. And when they're investing that kind of money in it, they've got every reason to move forward on there. So it's just not a paper plat, so to speak, with it, or a project for a future, but it's a project for now. So thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Jeff. Yes. So I'll go ahead and close public hearing and entertain a motion to approve item number 19.
Mr. Smith, did you want to amend, as Ms. Dixon Mendez mentioned? Sorry?
What's that?
Oh, okay. Just she proposed an amendment, or she suggested language, so. Okay, so we're going to, do you want to do that on second reading, Mr. Smith?
Well, let's go ahead and do it now. So how do we, we need to make a motion to amend?
Yes, sir. So first, we make a motion to approve the item, then we'll do the amendment.
Motion approved.
Okay, so the amendment is in Section 2, Number 1, and we're going to remove "define noise and visual separation from proposed short-term rentals." Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I so move. Second?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Aye.
The motion.
Did you say no?
No, he said aye.
Okay.
The motion carries.
Okay, so then we'll just approve it as amended, the ordinance as amended.
Yeah, motion approved as amended.
Do we have a second? Okay. You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, oh, Gil?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, you know what? It is 1:15. I know we have our port commissioners here to do a, or to give us a briefing, so why don't we go ahead and do that? And then we'll go back to item number 20, or we'll break for lunch and then go back to 20. Commissioner Guerin, Commissioner Engel.
Thank you.
So this would be item number 24.
Good afternoon. Gabe and I are here to represent the Port Commission. We do have a handout that we're going to give you. It's really two items on it. One is the status of our two D-SAL permits, and then the second one is, is an update on the issue that Greg Smith, Councilman Smith, raised last month, or we were here two months ago, about the dredge material and how it's affecting sailors. So we have, we do have an update on that also. Also, we also received an email from Councilman Pusly Sunday night on some questions that y'all wanted us to address, and I think we'll start with that. Is that okay? Okay. So the first question was the summary of the port's 22-23 budget. Well, I can tell you that unlike the city, our budget is approved in December, and we are just getting started in audit, going over the staff's recommendations for the next year. We've had the first meeting, we've got another second meeting this Thursday, and we have another one on the 24th. But then we'll have a open meeting, a workshop, for all the commissioners and all the public, which you'd be invited to attend also on November the 7th. I don't know the time, but that's when we'll be able to brief the full commission on the proposed budget for 22-23. So as of today, I have nothing to report about our budget, other than that we're in process. The second question was, how much is the port budgeting for state and federal lobbyists in the new budget? I don't know that amount, but I can tell you what we budgeted for last year, and that was just a little over a million dollars. The bulk of that was in Washington, DC, relating to our funding for the deepening and widening, and also other permits related to, related to that, and also, of course, the D-SAL permits that we've been working on. So it's, bulk of it's in DC, and the rest of it's in the state, and a lot of that's related to the permitting process that we're working on, on the different projects that we're working on, which includes D-SAL, dredge placement, the deepening, potentially the deepening of the water in front of Harbor Island from 70 to 75 feet to 90, sorry, going from 54 feet to 75 feet? Is that right? Yeah. Yeah. The third question was, has the port adopted a legislative agenda for 2023? And the answer is, we have not. I believe that'll be on our next commission meeting, which would be, not next week, which is the third week, it's been delayed a week, it'll be the fourth week of this month, on Tuesday. So the answer is, we have not adopted a legislative agenda as of today. Any plans for new MOUs the port is considering? Well, obviously, we are considering MOUs always. We can't announce any project on an MOU, because they're all subject to nondisclosure agreements. Once they pass through the commission, then we can publicly announce it, once the other party agrees to us publicly announcing it. I will say this, there is a lot going on. And I just got back several weeks ago from Panama and attended a, basically a forum there, where this alternative fuels is real, whether it's blue hydrogen, green hydrogen, ammonia. This is being talked about all over the world, and this area is primed for that. We can see this coming. And with the Build Back Better bill that was passed by Congress here several months ago, it really is incentivizing companies to come in to looking at producing green hydrogen, which is out of water, blue hydrogen, which is out of natural gas. They're very, both now, very competitive with each other. The first question that we're asked, when these companies are coming here looking at this area, is do you have a carbon capture solution? And the answer is, we're working on it. We do have an MOU with Howard Energy and with Tullis. They're working in a partnership. Howard Energy bought the Tri Refinery, which is a refinery that captures all the gases from all three refineries. And Howard Energy has bought that refinery with the idea of using that to be able to capture carbon that's being emitted, or... to be able to capture carbon that's being emitted, or basically being processed today. And the idea would be that geologically, this area is prime for injecting that carbon into the ground and storing it there for, I've heard the number, thousands of years. So that's real. It's going on. So there's a lot of interest in this area, primarily because of geological and the fact that we do have a, we'll have the deepest channel in the Gulf Coast, and it's an uncongested channel, and it's a well-run port. Update on the Port's current and proposed land acquisitions. Well, I cannot disclose what we're looking at, but I will tell you this, that we had in the budget last year about 80 million for land acquisitions. I think we've spent about 40 of it this year, so it won't all get spent. A lot of that will roll over to next year. I know that Councilman Smith asked, or made a comment before about us buying this land and taking it off the tax rolls. Most of this land is, has a farm subs, you know, it's dedicated as farmland, so it's paying very minimal taxes. And the only reason we're buying property is for development. So the idea is to take this property that's now basically, has a farm exemption, and putting it on the tax rolls at a much higher rate. And again, if you look at what's happened in this area over the last, and I've said this, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but we all know that there's hundreds of millions of dollars of property taxes and tax revenues going to school districts and to the counties, and some of it coming to the city of Corpus Christi through your industrial agreement that you have with these plants, including Exxon Sabeck, that basically is helping us pay for the roads and things that are important to the community here in Corpus Christi. Let's see here. Total number of jobs currently provided by local industry in both Oasis and San Patricio. The number that we show as port-related jobs, and port-related job could be a direct job. It could be a construction, and it could be a company providing services to the industry in this area. And that number is somewhere between 90,000 and 100,000 was what we call port-related jobs. And that is an approximate number. It's an estimate. We don't have a, we don't have an exact number, but that's the number that we've been using for a number of years now. So it goes up and down, and of course, you know about the recent announcements that Cheniere is just adding, you know, another, how many billion?
Seven. Seven.
Okay, seven billion more dollars, which again, creates more jobs for construction, et cetera. So it's just, again, this area, as you just said, Mayor, about the development of this area, and we're the eighth-largest city. Well, bottom line is, is that there's be people coming in here to live in those houses based off what's going on in industry. That's what's driving a lot of the growth in this area, besides the people that enjoy the coast and the water and being on the beach. So I'm going to let Gabe talk about D-SAL. I'm going to ask Gabe to talk about D-SAL. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Council. In terms of providing you with an update is what we, so if you certainly have additional questions, I know Michael put me in the hot seat here. So on your desalination permit status, I think many of you are aware, on September 22nd, TCEQ issued a permit for the discharge permit. That is up to $95 million per day discharge. It, there's some specifics that you have in front of you. 60 feet below the surface, maximum fluent percentages at each mixing zone. And this is a big bullet here, which my understanding is, if you think of the D-SAL plant in California, I think one of the newest that was built several years ago that provides water to the city of San Diego, that this is the 2 million parts per thousand, 2 parts per thousand over ambient at 100 meters from outfall. This is more, a lot higher standards here for this particular discharge permit, and a particularly monitoring plan to ensure compliance. Water rights permit is currently under development. We approved that resolution in May of 2020. We previous commission did to place the intake in the Gulf of Mexico. And we also have an update on the La Quinta D-SAL plant. The discharge permit application is pending for more information, with an expectation that that gets submitted in the fourth quarter. Water rights permit as well is listed there as well, and a hearing set preliminarily for November of 2022. With regards to some of the discussions regarding dredging, there was a lot of conversation with the open dredge placement. There's some detail, I won't read it here for you, but the port is working with the City of Corpus Christi Marina Advisory Committee to go through all those plans. There's a lot of concerns there with navigation charts that need to be updated, placement areas, they're not physically marked in the bay. There is dialogue and conversation that's ongoing, and we want to assure you that that's important. So I think that was one of your concerns, so there is that actively occurring. And if there's any other concerns that are, that are not a part of this, please let us know, and we can go about addressing it as well. I will report back to you with regards to the questions with Lexington and that, talking to Steve Banta, the executive director. Obviously, that is something that the port and the city and your staff are working towards. They continue to monitor that, as Steve has advised me. You know, obviously, this isn't, there's no imminent danger here, but there are concerns that are certainly trying to address and working closely with the Port of Corpus Christi. So that's something we'll continue to monitor, and we're actively working towards addressing. I know as many of you look at North Beach, obviously, there's been a tremendous amount of erosion on that beach, which continues to be a concern and something that certainly we will continue to address, obviously, with all the activity that's going on at the Corpus Christi ship channel. That's the update there. If there's anything further, we were open to questions from Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman Smith?
Thank you all on there. And to me, this is a great reason that we're having these briefings on there. So we brought up the navigation issues on there. It's a great report. I hope we can agree to the eight-foot. The port will accommodate that eight-foot depth because there's a lot of difference if you're between six and eight feet on there and taking care of the people that enjoy the bays with it, on it. So you briefed us on D-SAL. You have got your TCEQ discharge permit. Where are you with the EPA? I understand the EPA has come in there and said never mind to the TCEQ. So what's the status there?
Unfortunately, staff isn't available to answer specifically, so I'll try to answer to the best of my ability. The port is working to address, obviously, communicate directly and walk with, through with the EPA. There were some concerns the EPA had specifically with the TCEQ process. I can advise you only further, and perhaps Commissioner Engel has something more to add, but we are working to dialogue and certainly not ignore the EPA and any other concerns. There might have been some misunderstandings, which I'm, which is what I'm understanding with regard to some specifics from the EPA, but I imagine that's going to be an ongoing dialogue that we'll continue to address. I can assure you that, at least from management's perspective, that we've been advised that they are actively reaching out to the EPA directly and asking the EPA to engage on a one-on-one, to ensure that those issues and the issues they brought up are, that are addressed. David, I don't know if you have any other?
This is really a fight between the EPA and TCEQ. Port's kind of caught in the middle. The issues that they raised are, we have the answers, and we've written the EPA letter, basically giving them, that we're ready to sit down with them and give them the answers to their questions. But basically, it's a TCEQ EPA issue.
Okay. And so you've got your TCEQ discharge permit. You said you're working on your TCEQ water rights permit, which the commission in May said.
Which is, again, it'll be out in the Gulf of Mexico.
Yeah. And I don't know if you all were here earlier, that you know that we have our water rights permit for inner harbor.
Yeah, congratulations.
And maybe by the end of this year, we'll be going for the hearing for the discharge, if not Q1-23 on there. But now, you know, we're moving down. You're telling us there's potential probably water demand. I know the port keeps their cards very closely to their chest. So as a regional water supplier, you know, it's pretty opaque to us. But it may be we're getting to the point now that we need to be starting looking at costs. So we've got two applications sitting out there, one inner harbor and one Harbor Island. So is the port communicating with the City of Corpus Christi? Because in your white paper, your April white paper, you said the permit is for the city of Corpus Christi. So starting to work out the cost on potential D-SAL plants?
Well, the answer is, we have not done anything to work out the cost for the D-SAL plant on Harbor Island, but we probably should.
Yes, we probably are.
And the way the white paper was phrased was, is there would be a third-party operator of the D-SAL plant. I believe the city's planning to operate their own D-SAL plant.
The city hasn't made a decision.
Well, okay. And so, but the white paper talked about a third-party operator. I really think this would be beneficial for the community if we could sit down and really work out a, some sort of MOU, memorandum of understanding, which would then allow both parties to go out and seek that information from a third party, or maybe multiple third parties, and let them give us a estimate of, if you built a large plant, this is what the cost of water would be. We could also do the estimates in terms of distribution, in terms of what it would cost the city to distribute that water. I think that's the next logical step. I think it's a great idea.
Well, yeah, and I think the communication, and the city has done that for their proposed. We reached out a couple of years ago and do have that pricing.
For the inner harbor?
For D-SAL plants. We didn't, we specified the two locations on there. But yes, going out to the third parties, and at that point in time, with the city, that a design bill to operate, the question wasn't whether we'd be a design bill to operate, but what the term of that would be.
Would you like us to do that? Would that be something you would like for us to take back to the commission? That the city would like for us to do that?
I'm just one out of nine up there, but I think we're, as we're moving down the road, that I've seen some communication improving a little with this, and we all know we have a communication deficiency. So having our water staff and the guidance of this body where we want to be. So anyway, well, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other questions, gentlemen? Okay. All right. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay. So I think what we're going to do now is break for lunch. It's 1:33. And we will go into executive session on items number 26 and 27 per Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. So we will return. Thank you. So we will return. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene our meeting and I am going to, I'm gonna go to item number 23, which is under section M, first reading ordinances, and that is the ordinance appointing Douglas K. DeFratis, William Holt Feimster, Mariana Garza, and Mario A. Olivares as part-time judges of the municipal court of record in the city of Corpus Christi.
Do we have?
I move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'm gonna open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to give any comment on item number 23? Okay, there being none, we'll close public comment. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, y'all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
You say aye.
Okay, and Councilman Hernandez, you were an aye? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. And next, I will move up, we'll go to item number 25, an update on the municipal court caseload progress as presented to the city council municipal court committee on September 29th of 2022.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Forgive me if I botched this slide thing up. Is it, it's not up?
Will you, Judge, will you put the microphone a little lower so we can hear you better?
Can you hear me better? You got me better? Okay. So, the slide thing is not up. There it goes. Okay. So, thank you for allowing me to be here and give y'all an update on what municipal court has been doing, the process and the changes that have occurred. We do not have a backlog. A backlog is a set of cases, work that is waiting to be completed, cases that are waiting to be heard, and we no longer have that. We have created some changes in our process and the way that we handle cases and the way that we run the court. I have collaborated with Mr. Hernandez and we talk on a weekly basis, basis if not almost daily basis. And so, what I wanted to do is have the opportunity to let you know the changes that we have made, and the first and foremost are really those ordinance cases and that the way that they were handled. In the past, the ordinance cases, the way that they were handled is, number one, they would receive a citation, an individual would receive a citation, they would be given 14 days of a notice to appear in court. And if they didn't appear in court, then they're moved to another section where they're being waited for a review that they didn't appear for an affidavit and then moved to another section. By that time, we're almost 60 days out. And so, what the change that we have instilled right away is if somebody receives this ordinance violation, they are automatically summoned to court and they're automatically summoned to court within 30 days. The second big change that we have made is, in the past, these ordinance cases were required to be heard before the court. They were not given an option to plea and take care of and resolve their cases without coming to court, which required that they take time out of their day, their work, set aside the time, and come into court. So, what we did on the back of that summons is also created plea options, so somebody could plead no contest or guilty if they wanted to resolve it and request a deferred disposition or judgment and conviction so that they never had to come to court. We also give them that information on how they can resolve their case and how they can pay online, how they can pay by phone. So, those are some of the big efficient ways we've done it. I'm sorry, and I'm not pressing my slide, Gilbert. And so, these cases are being scheduled within 30 days out. And the second big change that we've made is the way we actually schedule the cases. Anytime that they're filed with the court or they're requesting a hearing, they are being scheduled within 30 days. And the reason why this is happening is because we are not opening up our court calendar except for 30 days at a time. And that really requires constant collaboration. It requires constant review of looking at the ebb and the flow of the cases that have been filed with the court and seeing where they are in the process. The best example I can give would be, I'm sorry, with the water violations. The minute I heard that we had so many water violations being filed, what I did is I looked at our court calendar, I created extra dockets, extra time, so that these cases can be heard and they had been heard within 30 days. The clerks are required, and they do, they set people within 30 days. If somebody comes to the window and they're asking for a hearing, that clerk is setting them within that week, if they can make it that day or within the 30 days. And the judges are just as vigilant as well, if they come before the judge, and I've even had people at 12:30 come to me and say, you know, I need a pre-trial. And I said, well, we have one in an hour if you can wait. And they do, they go on up to court. We are taking care of these cases. And what's happening is this process by streamlining these cases and funneling them, where we are making them be heard within a shorter time span and within the 30 days. The next slide that I really wanted to show is, it shows exactly how our cases are being handled within the month of August. So, we had 4% that were actually scheduled for the hearing. We had 17% in August where we have orders, they're still open, money is owed, but orders had been created out of those filed in August. 9% are requiring action, maybe these cases need to be scheduled for a hearing, maybe these cases need to be processed for a resolution. 26% do have orders that have been created by the judges where they are completely closed, money has been collected, they're paid, and they're satisfied and resolved. The 31% just failed to avail themselves to court, so those are in the process of getting another notice required by law and a possible warrant if they don't come to take care of them. And 31% had warrants that were issued. So, out of August, 43%, almost 50% have total orders that were taken care of out of those that were filed in August. And in September, the 18% were scheduled, the 13% have judicial orders that are still open where the money is being paid and those need to be satisfied. 37% need to be scheduled, it is pending action, and the 13% have our judicial orders where the money has been paid in full. 12% is where they have failed to appear and 7% is the warrants. And of course, as time goes on, these cases are going to get resolved. And I think that all of this really causes our court to be more efficient, more streamlined. There's also some changes that we have instilled in the end of the life of the case in regards to the collections and the payment plans, and Mr. Hernandez can talk to you about those.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Gilbert Hernandez from municipal court. Thank you, Judge. So, I wanted to show the council that last year, in 2021, there was 58,000 cases filed, 526, and the court closed 34,000 cases. It variants a percentage of 58%. That kind of gives you how many cases versus are filed versus closed, and obviously, we wanna, we wanna be closing more cases. This year is 2022, and this really happened, this, not the fiscal year, but the calendar year, it happened in calendar year with presiding judge Chapa being the presiding judge. There was 70,000 cases filed, and this is fiscal year through October, and we've closed 84,779. That's 119% cases closed over those filed. So, that's a, that's a big, great success that we'd like to show. Changes to payment plans. So, something that Judge Chapa requested is that we have a payment plan schedule, and so now clerks have a schedule that if somebody comes in and wants a payment plan based on the balance that they owe, they can have a four-month plan, six-month plan, and then if they, if they need something less than that, the minimum payment that a clerk can accept is a $50 payment at the window. Anything less, if they're, they're scheduled to see a judge, to accept anything less than a $50 payment plan. Something that Judge Chapa also changed was that payments must be paid monthly. What was happening was that if somebody would come in, if they had a $50 payment plan and they paid $150, their extension would go for three months, and then potentially, that person would not come back. Now, if they pay $150, they still have to come back the following month and pay the next monthly payment. That way, if they don't, then we schedule those cases to a failed to comply docket. At the failed to comply docket, if they fail to appear, the warrants are issued and we were also sending text messages to people who are scheduled to the failed to comply docket, no, I'm sorry, to people who have warrants, we're sending text messages. So, those are some of the changes to the payment plans. The warrant resolution, yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, we have, Councilman?
No, he can finish.
Okay.
The warrant resolution, as you know, we had the warrant resolution in September. This is the second year that we've had the warrant resolution. It's just information to the citizens to come in and handle their violations without fear of being arrested. There's no active arrest being, obviously, if somebody stopped and they have a warrant, they can get arrested, but it's not like your warrant roundup that we have between February and March. This is just communication, getting people to handle their violations towards that last fiscal month. For the year, for the month, we collected 925,000 total. A month collected on cases that were warrants, that was 277,000. Number of warrants that were cleared for that month was 3,192. Value of those warrants was 1.4 million. Now, what does that mean? It means that not all the 4.1.4 million on warrants was collected, but they placed it on payment plans, those warrants were cleared. And then, we had 7,001 people visiting the court that month. So, it was, it was very positive for the year. So, I want to show you what the court did as far as gross revenues. For the year, this year, fiscal year, court collected $10 million in gross revenues. That's the most since I've been here. As a matter of fact, the highest was 8.9 million back in 2017, '18 fiscal year. This year, we collected 10.2 million.
Wow.
In net revenues, again, the highest, 6.4 million this, this year. We actually grossed not, we actually netted 2 million above what we were budgeted to, to collect, and again, higher than 2017, '18, which was 5.7 million at that time. So, you can see where we declined a little bit, obviously, with, with the pandemic, it was barely at, a little over 4 million. But all these changes have brought more people coming into the court, more people handling their cases, which also in turns brings in more revenue. Any questions?
Councilman Martinez.
Thank you. I don't really have any questions, I just wanted to comment on how well you have done over these past several months. I know that, you know, with the years before with COVID, there were a lot of issues, a lot of backup, and I know that there were a lot of issues with this court. And I'll tell you, one thing that really stands out to me is when, when I first came in, being on the municipal court committee, there was a lot of tension between the administrative side and the judicial side. And now, it seems like y'all are working so much better together and we're seeing the results. I think that Judge Chapa, since we brought you onboard, the, the changes have been, have been drastic and, and, and successful. I think that the things that you're doing to increase efficiency have been needed, and I think that we're seeing the results of that. So, I commend both of you for the work that you've done, for being able to work together to find these solutions and to be able to get the best results we can. And, you know, I'm confident that we can continue this in the future, so thank you both.
Yeah. Well said. And I will echo that, and thank you, Judge. It's very impressive. Gilbert, thank you very much. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Smith.
Well, I want to reiterate that also, but I also want to thank
Well, I want to reiterate that also, but I also want to thank Chairman Martinez for your leadership in doing this. Councilman Barrera, I know you were very active on that. And, you know, we as a body, we sat here and told our city manager, we want improvement. Judge Chapa, Gilbert, you've done a great job. You know, we had the Six Sigma here earlier. And what I'm seeing here is what they're learning to do, you all were really doing. You were increasing the efficiency. I hope that the customer service level on that too. I know it's fines, but they're still our citizens and we've got that responsibility. So, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. Thank you all so very much and everybody involved with really a great leap in how we're treating our citizens and the operations of our municipal court.
Councilman Hernandez has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. The, you know, I noticed that you gave the statistical information. But I wanted to ask you specifically on when the violation is done by a corporation and how you break that out and what changes you've made to go after those individuals. It's a different process than when you're going after an individual violator. Can you give some statistical information about that?
So Councilman Hernandez, this is Judge Chapa speaking. So I don't have the statistical information on those amount of cases that have been closed, but I can speak to the change that we have made with regards to the corporations. If we have a high managerial agent, if we have an individual, an agent of the corporation who has the authority to act on behalf of the business, they can come in and speak with a prosecutor. They can resolve their case without the necessity of an attorney. And I have found that there have been more resolutions for those cases as well. If you would like any further statistical information, we can certainly get that for you.
Actually, please do. You know, I won't go into any specific cases, but there are some issues that we've seen with corporate violations.
We will do that. Okay, Councilman Barrera?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, once again, I want to echo how pleased I am and I know the rest of the council is. I also want to thank Peter and Gilbert for putting up with my outbursts several months ago. And I, you know, and I think that's what it is, is that that was, as Councilman Martinez said, is that the instance of collaborating and working together. And Judge Chapa, you've just done an excellent job of creating systems, providing reports so that way you can measure the productivity and the efficiency of the judges that work with you and to ensure that they're meeting the demand and exceeding those levels. And, you know, and Gilbert, the same situation with you, with looking at it more from a business process standpoint to say, how can we be more efficient? How can we be more customer service friendly? How much did we exceed the budget with regard to our revenues, our net revenues?
It was over 2 million.
So, you know, once again, that was one of the things that I said, and I think it was back in February, when I guess made a fool of myself. And what is it? Is that was one of my, the recurring theme is, what about the revenue? And I think that's something that we, you know, obviously, we can't look at it as a source of revenue, but we have to be conscientious as, are we being as efficient as we are as possible to ensure that every citation or ticket that's written, that we're operating at a maximum efficiency of course, so we can collect that revenue. And like you said, you know, making sure those courses are heard, cases are heard within 30 days. So that way, those people, not only is it remedied, but they're entitled, it's their constitutional right to have that due process, so that way it can be done efficiently. So I'm just really, this is a big win-win. I'm just really proud of all the work that you've done. And it's a pleasure to be a part of the committee. So thank you so much, you guys have really made it easier. Appreciate it.
Councilman Martinez.
Yeah, you know, Councilman Barrera and I were mentioned, but I would be remiss to not recognize Councilwoman Hunter and Councilman Molina's participation as well in the committee. You know, we put a lot of hours in interviewing people and meeting with the different groups. So thank you to you gentlemen as well.
Councilman Pusley.
Good job. The profit in law statement was a lot better, and hopefully that will continue. Thank you all very much.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you for everything y'all have done. I'm simply a cheerleader, doing whatever Councilman Martinez tells me to do. He has a lot of experience in this area, and I know y'all do as well, and we really appreciate what y'all have done. It's unimaginable, but thank you.
Judge, thank you. Thanks for being here today. We appreciate your service.
I do want to thank you and thank you for the opportunity. I enjoy being part of the change. I really do enjoy working with Mr. Hernandez, and we are at it all the time and trying to really, truly find processes. We're doing it earlier. We didn't take the lunch break, and we're finding different ways and different things to do and text message on payment plans and how soon can we get it done to really make the change, to keep the city moving forward, to keep up with all of y'all. Because every time I come in here, I'm amazed at what's going on. But thank you, and I really do enjoy it.
Well, we believe in you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll go get back in line here, go into item number 20, case number 0622-03, Amadon Holdings in District 4. And this is a public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Nina Nixon-Mendas, Assistant Director. The zoning case before you is case number 0622-03. The applicant is Amadon Holdings, and the property is located at 2101 Laguna Shores Road near Lola Johnson Road. The property is platted and is .18 acres in size. The zoning request is from the RS6 Single Family 6 District to the CR1 Resort Commercial District. The next couple of slides are images of the property taken from Laguna Shores Road. The first one is Laguna Shores Road looking east. This is 1,800 square foot, two-bedroom, two-bathroom home, and it has six parking spaces. There are three spaces in the garage. It's another view of the home. And if you notice to the south, the adjacent property that is currently zoned CR1, and it is owned by the petitioner of this zoning case as well. The purpose of the request is to allow for commercial uses, which could include short-term rentals. The subject property is part of the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan, and the Future Land Use Map designates the property as low-density residential. Adjacent uses to the north is low-density residential, and that is submerged land. To the south is vacant, and that is zoned CR1. Again, that's owned by the owner of the subject property as well. To the east, vacant, and this is submerged land also. And then to the west is low-density residential, which is zoned RS6. And again, those are the homes along Lola Johnson Road. With respect to public notification, no written opposition was received, one in favor. So with respect to analysis and recommendation, again, the subject property does have an existing home of approximately 1,800 square feet, which was developed in 2007. It has an adjacent property to the south that is currently zoned CR1, although that's undeveloped. The proposed uses would include a commercial office as well as a multifamily. And the proposed zoning district, of course, is oriented towards tourism and water-oriented uses. The proposed rezoning is not consistent with the Future Land Use Map. However, it is consistent with other elements of the comprehensive plan, and it is compatible with the neighboring zoning district. Staff and Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning, and I stand by for questions.
Councilman Pusley. Oh, it's from, okay. Do we have any questions? No, no, I don't see any questions, so I'm going to open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 20? Nope, there being no one, we'll close public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. That'll take us to Section L, Individual Consideration, items 21 and 22. Item number 21 is one reading ordinance amending Chapter 14. Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances to adopt the following three items: the updated Minimum National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP, requirements; the new Flood Insurance Study, or the FIS; and the new Effective Flood Insurance Rate Maps, or FRS.
Afternoon, Council, Mayor. Gabriel Nohosa, Interim Director of Public Works. Here today to present the flood hazard prevention and Code of Ordinance Amendment for the City of Corpus Christi. So why do we need this amendment? Well, this community is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. So the National Flood Insurance Program offers reasonably priced flood insurance to all properties in communities that comply with minimum standards and floodplain management. So along with complying with those minimum standards, there's also the community rating system. So we also participate in the community rating system, which our efforts beyond those minimum standards by reducing, by helping reduce flood insurance premiums for property owners. So next, so in 1999, Texas House Bill 1018 mandated all Texas cities and counties to join the NFIP. So in order to join the NFIP, regulations identified minimum requirements that communities must fulfill to stay in the program. So you must adopt a floodplain management criteria that matches the flood risk data provided by FEMA, so your FRS maps and your FIS. So these are the new maps that we are adopting today. And you must comply with the minimum, must comply with the NFIP minimum criteria set forth in 44 CFR 60.3. So this is some updated code language that we also have in this ordinance. So the City of Corpus Christi is a Class E community. What does that mean? So that means, you know, we have flood maps that are available with elevations, floodways. And what makes us a Class E is the coastal high hazard areas, the V zones. So what happens if we don't adhere to this minimum requirement? So not adhering to the NFIP regulations can result in suspension and/or termination from the NFIP program, causing every flood insurance policyholder to receive fines and unable to renew their flood insurance policies. So what are the major updates in this ordinance? So of course, you know, we've been on that journey since 2015 when the preliminary maps came out. So now FEMA has said those preliminary maps are going to become effective on October 13th of this month. So with adopting those, those become our effective maps, and the ones prior to that are no longer in use. So another thing is FEMA has clarified adding machinery and equipment to the one-foot freeboard that we currently have in our ordinance. And also clarifying added NFIP requirements that attached garages and enclosures below elevated buildings need to adhere to the Plus One BFE that we've established. And also seven new definitions were added. So what do the new FRS maps look like? So this is a side-by-side comparison of the La Voya Creek area. So previously, you'll see the picture on the left, that is the old kind of floodplain, and you'll see an extreme change to the slide on the right within that area. But of course, you know, we have those couple of projects that we are doing along La Voya Creek to reduce the floodplain of this area. But you can just see the amount of detail now that these maps have than they had before. So when participating in the NFIP, we have an opportunity to be involved in the community rating system. So the community rating system is a volunteer, voluntary program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management practice that exceed the minimum requirements. So your community gets ranked from a 10 to a 1, 1 being the best. So rewards communities that exceed minimum standards, such as the Plus One you'll see there in the Series 400. So there's 19 activities under these four categories that we participate in. We do outreach. It has to do with, you know, the environmental aspect of stormwater, you know, the stormwater, you know, freeboard, stormwater design detention. So all of those feed into those four categories, which then in turn, you earn points off of your activities, and they give you a score. So why do we participate in this community rating system? Well, there's six, over 16,000 policies citywide that we are responsible for. So the more we do, the more we can get discounts on premiums for these over 16,000 policies citywide. So you'll see it's spread, you know, pretty much evenly through all five districts, you know, concentrating more in the areas of where those flood sources are. So the island, Oso Creek, Corpus Christi Bay, and, you know, the Nueces River. So, you know, 16,000 policies across the whole city is what we're trying to achieve those discounts for.
Gabriel, can I just repeat that? So, because I'm trying to figure out who sent me the text. Somebody sent me a text this morning, I think from the council, but insurance rates won't go up because of this today, right? Most likely, they're going to go down?
So yes, the goal is with the ordinance here and the Plus One that triggers us, and I'll get to that next slide, that we can achieve more discounts.
Right, more discounts for insurance. So that's the message.
Are you sure?
Yes.
I don't know about that. I would be real careful saying that.
Yeah.
Because it's, well, the insurance world, I mean, this is all based on, it's not necessarily based on us doing this. It's on a state level. But they use things like this to say, your insurance is going to go down. But flood insurance. Yeah.
The premium itself, but what we do, what our efforts do is allow for a discount. So these are automatic discounts on this slide. So you'll see currently, we are now a Class 8 with a 10% discount from FEMA. So you'll see 16,000 total policies right now. It's around 9.7 million, almost $10 million in premiums that those 16,000 policies pay. The majority being your single-family residential with a little over 11,000 policies. So right now, with those single-family residential, you're looking at about $7 million in premiums in our current class of Class 8. You know, our goal, which this ordinance will allow us to do, is get to that Class 5, which is a 25% discount. So you'll see on the right side of the table where that takes your average single-family from 619 currently to around 516, so almost $100 savings by allowing us to, you know, do these activities. But, you know, the key thing, the key trigger point is the Plus One on the base flood elevation. So if there was no Plus One, you know, the best we could do as a community would be Class 9. FEMA would not allow us to go anywhere past a Class 9. So right now, with the current ordinance that we have, we're allowed to be a Class 8 and work our way up to a Class 5. So getting to that Class 5, it'd be about $1.2 million in reductions in your single-family residential annual premiums.
Okay, Councilman Smith? Wait till he finishes, okay.
So, you know, a big clarification in this ordinance is garages. So attached garages are considered to be part of the structure. FEMA has clarified this in technical bulletins and other documents that now the garage, even though it's a non-habitable space, needs to meet your ordinance. So the garages will have to meet the Plus One standard that we have in our court current ordinance. They are options if you do want to build below BFE. There's engineered flood openings that builders can take advantage of. There's also, you know, different types of construction, pier and beam, stem wall construction. So there's options for builders when it comes to meeting our standards of that Plus One BFE. Correct, sir. So staff's going to recommend approval as ordinance as presented. So staff's going to recommend approval as ordinance as presented, and we stand by for questions.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you. Katie, when we met, we discussed the difference between NGVD 29 and NAVD 88. So what is that difference?
So we looked at all of the ones that have been submitted lately, and it's about a .5 difference.
Six -- about six inches. And why I'm bringing this up, what this is, so they were using this old benchmark, the 29 on there for their measurements. And what we're adopting today is 88. So 88, so everybody to get the same elevation, you have to be six inches higher. But you did say that their grandfather in the old elevation certificates in that were done on NGVD 29.
Prior to this coming Thursday, yes.
Okay. So for the building committee out there, if you want to maintain a 9, then it's six inches higher. The new 9 is six inches higher than the old 9.
Six inches lower, actually.
Yeah.
I thought that...
88's higher.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you got to go six inches higher, correct?
Yes.
Okay, .5 feet with it. You know, I was looking into it, and community rating system, the document is 700 pages on there to determine your community rating on there. But the nice thing, that's a simple one. So they're going to this RISK 2.0 with it. And you talk about opaque, it's about as visible as 12 inches of lead on there. I tried to find out what my home was and just couldn't do it. They're really doing a complete change for the community. To the mayor's point on there, if we bring our CRS down, with it, we can gain, but about 80% of this community is going to be paying higher flood premiums on there. And the way they measure now each individual house, it used to be simplicity. You could go look at the flood map, you're one foot above, two foot above, you get discounts at every level. Not the case anymore. You got a zillion inputs you got to be, and they're looking at all the surrounding kind of stuff with it. So for a policymaker, and I thank our friends at FEMA on that, it makes it very difficult because they have made this so granular to make a decision where before I was promoting two foot above BFE, but with the condition it is now, you just can't do it because you don't know what the effect is. Because it's a very, very complex system. So everybody that's looking out there, pays flood insurance, your next bill, four out of five people is going to be higher because of RISK 2.0 and the changes FEMA made. Now, by the adoption of this, and we can get the discounts in, and that will help offset that. Now FEMA, by 2.0, they have limited the increase per year to 18%. So we're looking at that with it on there. But I think FEMA can work a little bit harder on making a more transparent system as far as those citizens go on there. Because I was very disappointed, just going through, trying to figure out how much, what affects anything else. They do have one map that's by zip code that tells how much your premiums are going to increase per that zip code. 78418, which is Flower Bluff and the Island, 80% of the -- is going to see a premium increase. As we go out in District 5, the numbers are similar with it. It's only when we get into the Robstown area that we see that 50% level. But I'm glad we have this emergency deal to work on something we've been working on 10 years, but you explained very the reasons why. And Katie, thanks for all the work you're doing, and this very complex environment in trying to bring some savings to our citizens. Thank you.
Councilman Barrena.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, thank you, I mean, first off, I want to reiterate, we really don't have a choice other than to adopt the program. I mean, it's just required because now the map, the maps have changed. And I want to commend Peter, you and your team for implementing this program, and particularly -- is it Kathleen or Katie? Either one. I guess Greg can call you Katie. Either way, adopting this system so that way we can provide some type of relief for our residents, because the map has -- is obviously expanded. So what does that do to the individuals that, since the map has expanded, and I know we talked about this yesterday, but what does that do for individuals that were not in a floodplain and now they are?
So those individuals that are still under a federally backed mortgage, they will receive a letter, we don't know when, because since it's so new, mortgage companies are still trying to figure out how they're going to implement it, right? When they're going to send letters out, if they're going to give them a 30-day grace period. They'll receive a letter stating that now they're mandated to purchase flood insurance. And so that's what they'll have to do. So that's why we're trying our hardest to do everything we can on our side to get to a better rating as quick as possible, so we can get a better discount, so they don't see that big of an increase added to their yearly obligations getting flood insurance.
And how much -- and you know, I just -- well, I'm going to follow up to that question. Have we figured out how many -- we have figured out how many possible homeowners of the 16,000 policies that would be affected by this?
So FEMA responded with about 688 that they know definite would be going up.
Okay. So, and then, and I want to commend Kathleen again, and Gabe, for his staff, that they're also looking for opportunities that they have a resource. You said in Louisiana? Can you explain that?
Yes. So in -- with this map change, we had some areas that are coming into a flood zone, which we have projects going on in those areas that will later hopefully take them totally out of a flood zone. So I contacted FEMA, they have similar situations going on in Louisiana. And one of the communities there is looking for outside funding to help cover a portion or all of flood insurance for those areas that are maybe low-cost or low-income areas to help cover that for the duration of whatever mitigation project that the city is doing. And so that's what we're going to try to do as well on our side.
And I guess the La Voya Creek project is about two years away from completion?
I would say two to three years, and then submitting the data back to FEMA, FEMA to review all that, and then, you know, actually have a, you know, a map revision or a map amendment. So yes, about two to three years.
And Peter, this really comes at an appropriate time. And there's -- this goes into effect October...
13th.
13th. So this comes at a time when we, obviously, the General Land Office handed out funds for flood mitigation. So that may be an opportunity to be able to utilize that. This morning, you know, just in passing, I talked to Amy with Legal to see if home funds would qualify for that type of -- or Type B funds. In addition, Mayor, I've also talked to -- because a lot of this precinct, a lot of this area overlaps Precinct 2 for Commissioner Gonzalez, in addition to Commissioner Modis, and they've expressed concern as well. And they, if we were in to enter that type of arrangement where somebody could have some relief because of the fact that they've never had to buy it before, now all of a sudden they've got this bill that can only be paid on an annual premium that might be $500, $600, $700. So they're -- they have interest to be able to, for us to provide that resource to help mitigate those costs until we've completed the La Voya Creek. So I think, you know, kudos to your team. That was going to happen, and I just want to say to the public, that was going to, regardless of whether we put in these measures, the public was still, as a result of FEMA, because of the federal government, they were going to incur those increases. And the work your staff has done is, number one, trying to get them the best discount by us putting these programs together, and then looking further to be able to subsidize those costs until we get the infrastructure done. So good work, and, you know, a very complex project over several years, and I think this is a good way to look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the questions.
Yeah, thank you. Can we just recognize Katie Chopin, she's the young lady there, but she's the one that's really -- how many years has she been on this project? About two?
Just over one.
Over one, okay. Well, seems like two, but she came from Development Services and wanted to work in Public Works over this initiative. So she's spent just about all of her time, every day, making sure we, as a community, benefit from programs like this, and we appreciate it, Katie. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilman Pasley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Great job, guys, and I appreciate your time in meeting with me personally and going over this. I just want to reiterate for our listening public that, you know, this is going to be a new deal, and there's going to be some additional costs. There's going to be people who are going to have to buy flood insurance where they maybe thought they weren't going to have to, especially when they're buying new properties if the mortgage companies require it. But I want to reiterate, this has nothing to do with the city. These decisions are being made for us by the state and the federal government.
Correct. This ordinance does not bring an increase to any of those policies. Any increase is coming from RISK 2.0, from being added on a floodplain when you weren't. So basically, we have to adopt this to allow for those discounts and to allow to be...
Yeah, it's important to remember, if we don't adopt this, then we can jeopardize the people in this community from ever being able to buy flood insurance of any kind.
That's correct.
And so we just need to make sure that the public understands that the City of Corpus Christi is not passing an increase in people's insurance. This is a state and federally sponsored program that we're adopting.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure everybody understands that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. I think Councilman Hernandez has a comment.
Yes, thank you. We had some issues in the past where we have a steeper angle on the driveway because of the requirements for the setbacks. And now if we're going to go up an additional six inches, how -- do we need to make any adjustments on our UDC to account for that, considering that this may create a higher angle on the driveway?
So Councilman, we did meet with the Development Service Task Force. We did meet with the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association, and they, you know, gave us their sentiments on those issues too, and we said we would work with them. There's about 40 to 50, you know, infill lots left on the island that this could possibly impact, but yes, we would work with them on those issues.
Well, you got -- you, if you're talking about the island, you have a situation where you have -- you don't have sidewalks in some of those lots, so which makes your setback even shorter from the actual curve. So, you know, there's, you know, if you're going to make changes, you got to, you should probably have this in line to understand what that's going to affect on the other side.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think that's all the questions, yeah. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. Is there anyone here? Mark Harrod, would you like to comment on flood? I will close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 21. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries -- oh, Hernandez? Yes or no? Thumbs up or down?
I'll abstain.
Oh, he's abstaining? Okay. He's abstaining. Item number 22 is resolution awarding a construction contract to Clark Pipeline Services LLC for the reconstruction of Leopard Street from Crosstown Expressway to Palm Drive, a Bond 2012 project located in Council District 1. Mr. Edmonds?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmembers. Jeff Edmonds, Director of Engineering Services. As you said, this item is awarding a construction contract for one of the last remaining Bond 12 projects. As you know, this project intersects the Harbor Bridge project, and that's the reason that this has been on hold. We needed to define what the limits of that project were going to be and how we were going to tie this project in before we could complete the design. So that's why it's been so long in the pipeline. This item awards the contract to Clark Pipeline Services, who is doing the adjacent section of Leopard, and who has successfully completed road bond project for us in the past. And there is, well, a couple of other items associated with this. I'd like to call to your attention, there's a resolution where we, in one of the findings, we state that we're not conceding the point that this corridor is wholly the responsibility of the city to maintain, and there are some ongoing discussions with Texas Department of Transportation on what exactly those responsibilities are going to be regarding the municipal maintenance agreement. The other thing I'd call your attention to before Mr. Hernandez does is that on the funding certification, we are partially certifying the funds on this. This is one of the last of the Bond 12 projects, and as sometimes happens, particularly when you do a cost estimate and you come to construction a decade later, there's some inflation that takes place, and there's a bit of a shortfall on this project. So we're partially certifying the funds. There's a million-dollar shortfall that we're going to have to make up with probably certificates of obligation or some other funding in the future. But this is a project that's going to take 18-plus months, so we've got some time on the clock to be able to resolve that question.
I don't see any questions here. I'm going to open public comment. Mr. Harrod, would you like to make public comment? No? Okay. We'll close public comment. And I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 22.
Move to approve.
Mayor, the resolution that has been handed out that's in front of you actually has a few extra "whereas's" from what was in the packet, and I would like to clarify that the resolution that's being voted on is the resolution that has been handed out and is in front of council members.
Okay. Everyone's got it? But I mean, it's part of the item.
It is the same item that is in Legistar, except for the fact that their whereas clauses are different.
Do we need to read it or not?
It doesn't, as long as you're -- we're clarifying that the resolution that's being voted on is the resolution that has been handed out and is in front of all the city council members.
Okay. Okay.
Well, not all of us.
No, that's fine. He didn't get a copy.
Okay, so what do we need? Councilman Hernandez doesn't have it, but he was in the conversation and executive session.
Correct, yes. That's true, Mayor. And we'll send him a copy.
We'll send him a copy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion then. Did we have a...
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Pasley.
Sorry, we're about a million bucks shy of having enough money to cover the project. Is that what...
On the Bond 12, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Who made the motion?
I did, ma'am.
And who seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion carries. Okay. With no further business, this will conclude our meeting.